I just started streaming.
I got one.
There's one in that drawer. And Tom.
Yeah?
Willmore.
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 I kept saying Fillmore. That's your job.
I'm just.
What is on the agenda?
Justin, Justin's doing the minutes and he's doing them remotely. He's gonna be watching on YouTube. No, you don't have to say that. I'm just saying.
What do I say about December 2020 financial statement?
Just that they have them on their op- op-ads.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Huh? It's not not. You guys haven't got a quorum yet. Need a quorum. You see anything yet, Mark? They haven't turned their, um, make sure you turn your microphones on. Yep. Gina, make sure you turn your microphones on.
Turn your mic on, Gordy.
Is this me?
Yep. Dave, make sure your mic's turned on.
Uh, I will. Until after the joke.
Owen, you wanna turn your mic on?
Okay.
Okay, guys, we're, have a quorum?
Not quite that loud, are you scared?
I know, this, I'm new to this, so that was a little scary, too loud. Meeting will come to order. We welcome you to the Cache County Council meeting, January 26, 2021. I hope that was the date, yep, that's right. And appreciate all of you who have come today. We will begin today, we were scheduled to have Paul Borat give the opening, but he's going to be a little bit late. So David Erickson is going to give the opening. Thank you, David.
I'd like to give my opening in a form of a prayer. Now, Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful to be here. Grateful for such opportunities to gather together, provide a, a place to be able to speak, speak freely and just be able to share ideas and what's best for the county. We're grateful for protection that we have within this county and within this, uh, this area. We're grateful for the beauty that we have that we can enjoy. We're grateful for the leadership that, that, uh, everyone shares here. We're grateful for this country. We pray for those that protect us. We pray for those that, uh, give up their time for service. We're thankful for opportunities that we have to, to share each other's thoughts. And we hope and pray that tonight, that thy Spirit will be here that'll help us, that we will be clear of mind, clear in our thinking, and loose in our tongue, that we may share. And we again thank thee for these things and pray again for thy presence to be here in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And if you'd all stand, repeat the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. If you all had a chance to look at the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, have you all had a chance to review the minutes? And are there any corrections to the minutes?
Moved to approve the minutes?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, are there any follow-up discussion to the minutes or items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the report of our county executive, Bryce Mumford, our acting county executive.
Yes. Thank you very much. So, um, the item that's on your agenda, the December 2020 financial statements, those should be on your tablets. And just real briefly, wanted to touch, uh, on item number 13. This weekend, there'll be the special meeting. And due to the rules regarding how long after the person is, is appointed by the county Republican Party, we have five days to get that done. That won't allow us to get to our next meeting, so we will need to set a special meeting date. And so, just wanted to touch on that one as well. But other than that, that's all I had, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Okay. Um, move to item number seven. We have, we have a public hearing scheduled for 5:20, so, Mr. Adamson, with the SR30 project update, have about 15 minutes, will that suffice?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that have any questions?
Okay, if you'd like to take this down there.
We're gonna try to plug this in, we had it flash drive, but it didn't quite work, so. All right, there we go. You okay with me unmasking?
Yes.
It's hard to hear through.
Yes.
Um, my name is Dave Adams, I am the project manager, work for UDOT for the state of Utah, and the project manager for the SR30 project, and we're excited to be here. This, this project's been a long time coming, I know for a lot of you here, the environmental process, and I wasn't involved with it back during the environmental process, but I'm the PM or the project manager through this delivery. Um, we've been designing it for over a year now, um, you know, it's, there's a lot involved. You think it's just a simple little road widening, but with the, the wetlands and the, some of the properties and dealing with the, um, the reservoir out there, colored, colored reservoir, that, uh, there's been a lot of complications, but it's moving along and we're excited. We're hoping to be able to do some construction this summer, but because of delays dealing with the Federal Energy Commission and, and dealing with the power company, we just weren't able to do it. But the anticipated start date will be sometime in the spring of '22, is when we'll start construction on that, and it'll be two and a half year to, the project will take a little longer than you'd like, mainly because of the settlement issues out there. You guys know, as you all know, that, uh, it's a pretty boggy area out there and, and with the widening and the bridges and all, the settlement just takes a long time to, to pull out. So, just a quick overview of that, I probably went way off of what she has prepared for me. But, uh.
Do you wanna mask?
What's that?
Do you wanna mask?
No, no, I'm good. Um, the purpose today, just general information. What happened to this here? General information about the project, if you have any questions about it, but also, we wanna talk about the SR23 intersection. And, and that's, we pretty much have everything designed at this point. We know where the road's going, we know where it's gonna be wide, we know the impact to the properties. Uh, but the SR23 is still kind of out there, and we wanna maybe discuss that with you a little bit also. But before we jump into that, do you have any questions in general or specific with regard to the project?
Has there been any change in the design when you talked with us a couple of years ago?
Uh, no, no, it's ba, it follows pretty close to, with regard to the width, the lanes, and it's pretty much what the, yeah, what was in, in the environmental document. We've, we still have the trail, it's gonna be on the south side. The trail's moved a little bit in and out from the environmental, but we still have the trail there. Um, and so, it's pretty much.
I'm hoping that you would reconsider and make it a four lane all the way through.
Yeah, and I.
It's much good that when you have a four lane coming to the swamp, then go to two, so the cars can run off the road and then go back out to a four after they've left the swamp.
Yeah, well.
That's kind of an interesting thing, and we've never been happy about that.
I realize that, and I, I understand the history with regard to that, and, you know, I empathize with you. We, we pretty much have to follow the environmental document, and we're pretty much locked into that at this point. Um, we are, there are full shoulders on there, 12-foot shoulders, even where we have the, the single lane in each direction, we've got outside shoulders of 12-foot, and the inside shoulders are six, six-eight, I can't remember. So we have, we have full shoulders out there that, that will help.
With a bike lane as well, right?
Uh, actually, we're, the bike path, we don't have bike lanes, we have a bike, we have a, on the south side, there's a, a path.
The shoulder of the bike lane.
Oh, yeah, shoulder of the bike lane also, so, yeah.
So you feel good about that, the way you.
It's.
Let the environmental study overrule common sense, right?
Well, it's, it's not my decision at this point, really.
We've expressed it for a long time.
What's that now?
I say we've expressed our concern for a long time.
I know.
In fact, we even told the state on the last meeting, why do you even come here? You know, you aren't gonna listen to us, so just do what you want.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's, it's.
We will listen to you, okay?
It's not that, it's not, let, let's put it back, those decisions are above my pay grade at this point. My charge is to deliver, um, the project that was given to me through the environmental document.
We're hoping you'll deliver it back.
Yeah, he's charged to deliver it back.
It'll be an improvement what we have out there now. I know it's not exactly what you, you wanted with the two lanes in each direction. And like I said, I wasn't involved with the environmental document when that happened and all the decisions that got, that were made during that process. Um, but those decisions were made and the money was allocated and, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna deliver what, what was.
I'm sure you're gonna do us a good job, so we'll just.
All right, so any other, in general, questions with regard to the project, timing or specifics? Okay, well, like I mentioned, the only thing we, we don't have nailed down right now is SR23 on the, the west side. It's basically the west boundary of our project, and, and what do we do with SR23? During the environmental document, they looked at multiple different, I think we got a slide up here, multiple different options. Where's that slide at here?
Keep going.
Keep going. We looked at, the environmental document looked at multiple different types of options of, of what to do. Ultimately, the, the first option is, or not the first option, but an option, is to do nothing. We widen out SR30, leave 23 at a stop condition. It doesn't warrant traffic light at this point. So the, one option would be to do nothing. Uh, the environmental document briefly looked at some of these different concepts. Grade separated, which is a bridge, which is, is probably too expensive for the need. Divided highway, which gets real expensive because you're right away, you're, you're spreading that out. To signalize the intersection, um, doesn't quite warrant, and there's also safety issues with regard to SR30, stopping traffic on 30, and a roundabout, and it has its own problems too. So, we looked at those in final design. These were looked at just briefly in, environmental, but not really fleshed out. We looked at them and, and, and kinda none of them really worked for the purposes of what SR23, you know, what we need to do there. Bounce around here. So, one of the options, well, one option, like I said, is to do nothing. So, the do nothing is you basically leave the project, we widen out SR30, we leave stop signs on 23, and as you, as you're coming on 23, you just have to find a gap and merge in. Or if you're crossing through, you have to find two gaps and go across. Um, that's one option. The other option that we've, we're coming down to is the, we call it the R-cut type design, where you basically can't go straight through 23, but you come on, you do a right turn, you go down, get in the left lane and do a left turn. So, the beauty of this way, even though it's a little bit of out of direction travel, is you only have to cross one lane to travel, you only have to find a gap in one direction at a time.
In the fog.
What's that?
In the fog.
In the fog, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the fog's, yeah, that's, well, no matter what we do out there, the fog's gonna be an issue.
So, so it will be, will it still be possible if there's no traffic that can go straight through?
No, because there'll be a barrier right there. There'll be a, there'll be a barrier down the middle of the road from both those. We haven't made a decision on what we're going to do, and that's, that's part of our, our purpose and our reason to come speak with you today, is we wanna get your input. We've talked with some of the local cities and some of the staff, both Logan and, and the county. We wanna get, you know, we'll, we'll do what the, what you want us to do. We, we're not gonna go throw something in out there that we're not getting public support for. And, and so the two options right now is to do nothing, which is leave it as a, like currently is with SR30 widened, or this option here. There's lots of engineering reasons to, to do this, safety reasons why. This is a safer intersection, but some people, bouncing around on me here, some people don't like it because of, uh, the out of direction travel. Where'd we go? We got a ghost in the machine here. A little bit of out of directional travel, travel, but it's, it's a safer, when you only have to do one movement at a time, it's a safer. Uh, you only have to find a gap in one direction, and then you come to a rest and find a gap in the other direction. So, we wanna present this as, as an option. Like I said, we're still trying to finalize this up, but we need to have it finalized probably in the next couple of months of what we're gonna do here. And so, we would like some of your input, um, if you have any questions or comments about this, if we need to have further discussion about this, I mean, did I miss anything?
Nobody's.
I mean, there's.
I just think that this here would increase safety quite a bit though, wouldn't it?
Yes.
But you are taking out kind of a, a bigger stretch of everything.
Yeah, this, this increases safety, and there's, there's some.
Yeah, go to the next slide and it kinda shows.
Where's the, uh, the one that has all the conflict points?
I don't think it'll work in this PDF now.
Oh, okay. This one here, oh, okay, gotcha. Yeah, so it increases the safety quite a bit of this intersection.
Less convenient, less safe.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I actually live, I live in Leighton. And Leighton has these types of intersections, uh, we put them in six, seven years ago, and I still have people coming up to me saying, that's the stupidest thing you guys ever did, but it sure works real well, you know? I'm like, okay, if it works real well, there's a little out of direction travel. I had a friend of mine call the other day and he was complaining about it, that he had to go an extra half block down the road to do a U-turn, but I said, but he didn't have to wait so long. Well, I, but I had to travel all the way down there. So, I, I, I've experienced these types of intersections. It's similar to that, it's a little bit different because, you know, these are different types of roads in Leighton, if you're, if you're familiar with that, right there downtown by the mall. So, yeah, so, but it is a lot safer and, and it, you know, that one was done more there, not necessarily for safety, but more for throughput. This is more for safety because it reduces the conflict points and, and if you're coming, if you're coming from Wellsville, going over 30, going over to Tremonton, you gotta make that left turn, and that means, or if you're trying to go north, you've gotta get a gap in both directions to travel, you know, coming from the east and coming from the west. You gotta get two gaps and then hit that gap, and those cars are going at 70 miles an hour, 65, 70, and, you know, that, so you gotta have a pretty good sized gap to get in there. Whereas here, you only have to wait for a gap in one direction, and then you can come to a stop and then wait for a gap in the other direction and reverse back. And so, it, at, at the middle of the night, it's gonna take a little bit longer, and it's gonna not seem reasonable because you have to do all this and there's no cars on, on 30. But when things are busy, it'll be a lot easier for people to traverse that road.
So will that be acceptable with a load of Alpha Alpha on a semi-trailer with a long 50-foot thing? Will have enough room to get to the end of it and then make the turn to go back?
Yeah, the round, the, the, the turnouts right there are sufficient, we size them.
Yeah, those turns are sized for your typical large interstate truck, so it would take any, any size vehicle to be able to make that. We've also tried to accommodate, uh, farming equipment like combines to be able to turn that around too, so, um, we definitely try to make it very accessible, um, for any vehicle.
Would you do any sort of, um, education campaign? Because I don't think people in this valley are used to that kind of an intersection, and I think it's gonna take a little figuring out and getting used to.
Yes, if we implement this and build this, we'll, we'll do that ahead of time, to educate people on how to use it. I mean, once, once you figure it out, it's, it's, but it, yeah, but if you're not used to it and you haven't seen it, it's gonna seem kinda silly.
Yeah, you'll think, how do I, how do I turn onto that street? Is it blocked off forever, what's the deal?
Yeah, how come, how do I get over there, how do we get that way? It just re, it, it spreads out the intersection and it reduces the conflict points that a typical intersection has. You know, you, if you're coming up there, you've got cars coming this way, cars coming this way, and cars coming that way that you gotta watch out for if you're gonna do a left turn and go towards Tremonton. So, this way, you only have to address one direction of travel at each, each interval to get through, so.
Will there still be extra lighting there because we're, we've been concerned about the fog? I believe that they said they would put extra lighting at that intersection.
Yeah, we have lighting, we have lighting.
Yeah, we're proposing to put a full lighting system through both turnarounds and all the light, also the rail right down there too, so. It'll be well lit.
Especially with school buses and things like that, that's pretty critical through there. Quite a few that cross that road.
On 23, just have to go from 23 across, yeah. Right during the morning period when traffic's pretty heavy, probably.
In the fog.
In the fog. Can't do anything about the fog, but we can put lights and do, yes.
On 23, so if you're going northbound or southbound, will there be signs alerting people as they come to this that? Will they be flashing signs or just a road sign?
There'll be signs there, but you'll see that, you, you gotta come to a stop anyways, and you'll see that there's a barrier out there. It's, it's not just a curve, it'll actually be a barrier that you'll see. We'll have, we can put reflective on that, so you can see that you can't go through. At night, daytime you'll see it clearly, at night, they'll be reflective on it, so that you'll know that you can't continue through.
And there's no wetlands in this issue, this is all, your environmental study's probably pretty minimal there.
Yeah, I, I don't think we had any wetlands affected by these through.
No, or kinda highland here, and some of those ditches a little bit, but.
But you are accessing two roads out there, it looks like, right?
So that west turnaround is located where that parking right is right now? So, it's kinda combined.
It just goes into the parking right as well?
You can go in or you can turn around?
That isn't the road that continues.
No.
To go in further, okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's the parking right.
Okay.
Uh, right there, so we chose to use that, it made sense to put it right there. If we put it up or downstream, that would've had a conflict with that entrance, so it works real well. We have, where I live in Leighton, we have that type where they, you can go into McDonald's and one of them, or you can go into Walmart, or you can do the U-turn. So it works really well, one of them I've seen, you know, in practical being, living there and using that quite frequently, they, they work well.
So if you wanna go straight through the intersection, then you have to turn right, merge, and flip a U-E?
Yeah, and then come back and hang a right, so. Yeah, I mean, you, you know, in the middle of the night, it'll, it'll seem cumbersome, um, because in the middle of the night, you know, if it's 10, 11 o'clock at night, you don't have this traffic, usually you can get right through there. So it'll delay you a little bit, I, you know, I won't say it won't. But during the rush hour times, it, it'll be a lot easier to traverse this intersection.
Wouldn't a roundabout been better, a better plan?
Roundabout, the problem with the roundabout is, is the size of the roundabout has to be so large, and then you have to slow down SR30 so much to hit that roundabout. You'd have to slow SR30 down to 30 miles an hour, 35.
Yeah, 30, 35.
You know, and, and people right now with the narrow road are going 70, 75 out there and with the.
You ever gone through a roundabout with your load of hay?
I know it.
You have to have a big roundabout.
Have a big roundabout.
A roundabout with a combine is about the same experience.
Yeah, so the roundabout, it's just, it, it, and, and roundabouts work good if you have equal usage of, of the, you know, the legs are all kind of equally used. Here where 30 has the majority of the traffic and 23 does, and it's just, it's not quite as functional.
I can see that's gonna be quite an experience to bring a combine along, uh, along there and then take it to the middle and then drive on down there and turn it around and then head on up. And I actually will have to do that, so I'll report back how, how it works.
One thing we've done with this design as well is, and it's hard to see with the size, but when you, any of the U-turns, we're not making anyone turn right into SR30 traffic and try to merge in. They're always giving an extra lane to do the U-turn, a movement, get into that extra lane and either turn right in SR23 or merge into SR30 traffic, so.
Yeah, the acceler, the shoulder to accelerate on, as you do that U-turn, then you can. So if you have a small gap, you can still get across and then wait for a bigger gap to merge back in.
Counsel.
It'll help quite a bit during the, the peak periods.
Counsel, it sounds, oh, go ahead.
Combines and semis and that, you, you usually just expect people to slow down.
Yeah.
When we're going across. And there's not too many that desire to hit you, so it works pretty good to.
Yeah, they don't usually win those confrontations, do they?
Counsel, it sounds like, um, we're leaning more toward this R-design, is that correct? We give UDOT a thumbs up on that? I don't think we need a formal vote, but do you prefer the other direction?
Well, I, I think we need to definitely, safety over convenience is priority. And I think especially out in certain severe mornings of fog and things like that, you've gotta have something to mitigate that, that time that you're, you know, crossing that entire road. So I, I hate to say it, but safety over convenience is really critical right there. Number one would be a light.
Yeah, well, and those will, those will be going in, as we mentioned, it'll be fully lit, the intersection and the, and the ramp.
I'm talking about a stoplight.
Oh, stoplight, gotcha.
Total system, get you on and off, that's probably the safest, but it doesn't warrant the, a volume of traffic yet.
Yeah, well, and even sometimes traffic lines aren't necessarily safe. Not to, not to counter you, but there's, there's, they have their issues and problems also with respect to.
I just know how wonderful they are when you have those warning lights, you know, when they flash and say.
Oh, those are gonna be really good, yeah.
It's coming up, I, they, I think they've.
So I was wondering.
They've saved many lives, you know?
Flashing light, plus I wonder, if I'm a new guy in a truck coming northbound on 23 and it has snowed like a devil, how do I know my lanes? I've got an acceleration lane if I turn right, but I wanna go east, so I've got acceleration lane with the big truck to get going. I've gotta cross two lanes of traffic and then be in a turn lane, right? So, is that gonna be something that is really identifiable in a snowstorm or when there's snow on the ground? I mean, we hear about I-15 and lanes of traffic being crazy.
Isn't there a barrier?
Yeah, there'll be a barrier.
But I gotta cross, still to.
We'll have signs out there that have that little, you know, whether they see the sign or not, you know, that's, it's unknown. But there'll be a sign showing that movement. It's kind of a little up around type movement there, with a through turn, I, you know, or the.
Probably when we get to the point, there's enough traffic that we merit a traffic light, we'll also merit the four lane. So I guess it's just something we gotta live for.
Okay, so thumbs up on the R-design? Any other questions or discussion?
I don't know much about roads, so I'll pick their word.
They'll, they'll do it the way they want, so.
Yeah. There's kind of an option.
I mean, I mean, the two options right now that we're looking at are to do nothing, that's still an option. That we just leave it as is, we widen 30 and we leave 23 with stop signs. And, and we'll still put lights up, and that's still a viable option. I feel, we feel this, this R-cut design is a safer option, but it has its drawbacks too. You know, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it and say it's the best thing, but, um, but it's better than, my opinion is, it's better than just an accurate stop sign condition that we currently have there now.
How many accidents have we had at that intersection in the last two years? Has there been very many?
We've had, yeah, I, I don't have the numbers right on me, but I know we've had a number of intersect, we've had a fatality there in recent years, a couple of fatalities. I think someone flew through that stop sign at night. Few years back, I'm not sure what year.
I just thinking in my mind, uh, I actually have to farm around that and go through it occasionally, and of course, you gotta be careful and you got those, uh, the traffic coming off of the hill and then coming from Logan, and it's quite rapid. But when you have to go to the middle and drive down the center and then turn around and go back out, I'm wondering if right now, we should just leave it as is with the anticipation that when it gets even more serious, then go to this and then. Step into a light of future. That's kinda my feel for it.
So one thing maybe to point out with that comment, um, is we've tried to line up, so, this is SR23 down here, if you can see a little hand, and this left turn pocket. We've tried to arrange the opening of this left turn pocket, so you're really not trying to get into SR30 through traffic at all, but you're just trying to cross it to get into this pocket to get, go in, and not actually ever merge into SR30 if you're trying to get across.
So, yeah, if you, if there's a gap big enough to get across those two lanes coming down the hill, then you shoot across and get in that inside lane, which is not a through lane, it's just a turn pocket lane.
So that's a question, if I'm turning to go east there, I'm stopped, am I backing up traffic behind me who wants to go west? Have they gotta wait for me to cross the lane? Do you see what I mean?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Gotta wait for me to be able to cross before they can continue making a full right and go west.
That's the case, but the 23 traffic right now is pretty low that I don't think it'll stack up so far.
Except when you have shift chains at Thicke or some of the others, that's, I've been on there, so.
You've seen it when it's pretty bad.
Well, I used to park there, so.
Okay.
There is space to get around someone if they were there, as you can see these shoulders, it's not like designated space, but you can see that's a lane there, it's a 12 feet, and you got all this space here where someone could theoretically turn around, turn around that person and get in, but we haven't striped it that way.
Yeah, no, and just don't use the bike path.
Yeah.
It'll be less congested.
It is big enough, you could try to do that.
Yeah, there's enough pavement there, you could screw around, but, yeah, I mean, that, that is a situation where you don't have a free right for the eastbound, um, and they may wait a little bit through, but.
Okay.
That's what my look at that, is that, that bike lane you got there, I'm wondering if that's gonna be the acceleration lane for the person that wants to, to head, uh, you know, east or, or west. Because, you know, someone's doing what Nolan said, they wanna go on across and get to the middle so they can turn and, and go east or even turn and go west. The traffic that wants to come there and then just go to the east will probably wanna just try to shoot past them when they can. It'd be interesting, if you say it works, then I'm all for it.
It, it works, it works, um.
I mean, you've had experience with it.
Yeah. I mean, we have four of these in Leighton. Yeah, I mean, we have four of these in Layton, um, and I, you know, I've been, you know, granted, I've worked for the DOT, but I, I, and I'm an engineer, you know. I, I still see, like I said, some people still complaining about having to go out of direction travel, but, you know, Christmas time, back before they put that in, you would stack between like three or four different lights, and it would take you like seven, eight minutes to get through a half mile, and now. You know, even during rush hour, you'd maybe wait it one night and it just flushes right through, very efficient types of intersections. Now, this, this is more for safety than it is for, the Layton one was put in more for congestion, um, but it works for both, it works for safety also, if taking those, um, those conflict points away. Where you only have to address one area of conflict at a time, as opposed to addressing both of them at the same time.
This may, may even work pretty good on Logan Main Street, maybe. You know, with all the traffic we get at certain times and get the congestion out of there and off of there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one issue with that is that you can't really have accesses, and that's, that's where it may not work, is you, you can't have secondary accesses off these. If you have a bunch of driveways on there, that might not work, because they would conflict with those driveways, but it's a good thought. All right, well, thank you, um, yeah, so I mean, I, I know you can't like say yes, you heard approved, but I mean, if, if we need to have further discussion, uh, we need to come to a decision, as a design team here pretty soon, with regard to what we're going to do on this, um. And so if, if we want to have further discussion, or if you want to give us, you know, I don't know how you put it, uh.
A thumbs up, maybe?
Thumbs up that, that seem amenable, we've met with some of the mayors out west and.
Well, we could vote on it if someone wants to make a motion, it's just an opinion vote, but.
And what is their, you know, the mayors over there, what are they saying?
We met with, um, actually, we couldn't get with the Welsville mayor, we got with, um, Menden, and he was.
He was like you, he said, it seems like it's going to work a lot better, it's a lot safer, we're going to have to figure out how to drive it.
I think that's about well put, I mean, what else you can do?
Did you, Norworth Newton, you talked Newton mayors that Peter, you know.
No, yeah, no.
Okay.
We've, we've got that, we're looking to do that, right, set those up, yeah. We're meeting with Logan also.
Yeah.
We've, we've had some discussion, even though I know that's not out in Logan, it's more in the county, but, you know, they have a lot of residents to drive out there, so.
The residents go that way or from Logan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, we had staff from, was it staff from Logan or the county that said they lived in Welsville and they.
Logan.
It was Logan, and he said he just didn't make that movement, he just wouldn't, he'd avoid that intersection.
Can we go to the last slide? We have some contact information, sorry I'm cutting in, Dave.
Oh, no, you're good.
Just to kind of wrap this up.
Time meant to be here.
Oh, because here's the next one. We do have some information online that you can look at in more detail, those little gifs that we have there will show how it reduces the conflict points and all that, so. At that website at the bottom, if you go there, there's a little link in the middle of that page that says click here to go to the story map, and then the story map is sort of like a presentation. It's much longer than what we thought we had time for today, so you can go there and, and kind of scroll through, see more about the project and then the benefits of this type of intersection. The other ones that we looked at, that we dismissed or eliminated from consideration, and then, um, that's our phone number, it brings to me and my team, and the email comes to us as well. So if you have concerns or questions, you're welcome to let us know and we can pass them along to the design team.
Well, on this PowerPoint too, we can, we, they don't have a copy of it here, but we can, we can email that out, and you can share that, the public needs it, I mean.
Yeah, I do have some flyers here as well that I can leave you that have the.
That'd be great.
Anybody that the public wants to have access to it, if you, uh, either contact or grab a flyer or something, contact and we'll email, we'll email the link out to you if you don't want to write it down.
Could be a link that we could put on the county, uh, the county website in the future before you get going that would explain and maybe even have a video of how people actually use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, as we get closer, we'll get, we'll get to that point, yeah, for, for now, what we have is sort of how we got to this point through environmental, what the project includes now, and then some information about this intersection in general, so.
I just don't want the public calling me up after it's all in and they go through it once or twice.
Give them my number.
And they, they say, what were you, what were you guys smoking when you did this? Anyway.
Yeah.
But no guarantee they won't, but I, I think most people that use it and use it enough, they'll realize the value of it.
Yeah.
Like I said, I still have, I, I still have to talk to people down there and it's, I'm like, but it works so much better, but I don't want to drive an extra block out of the way.
Yeah.
Okay, here, here's five cents for your gas.
Madam Chairman, we, if you can, uh, I would then, as far as, I, I'm not in favor of like a formal vote.
Right.
For this, but I would say upon favorable approval.
Mm-hmm.
From, uh, Westside residents and their leadership, you know, that this, um, dialogue that you're having with them, that we would, we would favor this option if it's favorable to them.
Okay, that works.
Counsel, good with that? Mm-hmm.
Yep, very good.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your time, thank you for coming up here.
And, you know, like, we have this website, we'll have information on it, that was a great idea, well, as we, as we get closer to construction and information about that, this website will stay the same and we can communicate that through this website, so having a link on your webpage would be really good.
People could go on the website and see exactly how to do it, I mean, they're going to drive up to the first time and kind of look at it.
But even more than just this, just the full project in and of itself, we'll have more information as we get closer to construction and get into construction, it'll be one of the means we use.
When is the start date? I don't believe you've said.
Um, hopefully spring of twenty-two.
Time flies, isn't it?
Year from now.
Year plus from now, that's, we still, I mean, the design is done, pretty much, other than this, it's just the, the dragons we have to slay to get some of the bureaucratic stuff that we have to go through to get there, to get approvals, one being the railroad and the other being the, uh, the Rocky, I keep saying Rocky Mountain Power, Pacific Core Property, and then, and acquiring that roadway.
Down to the railroad, does it?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, the railroad is just short of twenty-three, it's just on the east side of twenty-three, so we're reha, we're redoing that whole railroad, and even though it's a simple little at-grade interchange or at-grade railroad crossing, it's, we still have to go through all the the bureaucracy of the railroad to get that approval, so.
All right, Ms. Henderson, thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to move down to items on number ten before we have some public hearings, so we're going to go to ten B. Um, we have a public hearing to approve the appointment of a representative to the Cache Mosquito Abatement District, um, the candidate is Jeff Ricks. Following that, we have a public hearing, um, to approve an appointment, um, of a representative to the Cache Water District Board of Trustees, and we have two candidates for that one seat, and they are Don Baldwin and Tom Wilmore. Bryce, did you want to say anything on this?
I was just going to introduce the item and tell you about who the, each of the candidates were, but I think we're covered on that.
Did that cover it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so let's first start with, um, the public hearing for Mr. Ricks, uh, is Mr. Ricks here? No, okay, if there's anyone who would like to, um, speak about that, they can come to the podium here, please state your name and address the council, and so we'll open that public hearing right now.
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to close that public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll now move to the public hearing for the Water District, um, and Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Wilmore, are you here? Okay, both are here, let's start, um, with Mr. Baldwin, and each of you, of course, I'll let you come up and, we'll have you come up and speak as you want to, plus anyone else who would like to speak, so. Mr. Baldwin, I'll start with you if you'd like to address the council and come to the podium.
I guess I'm just giving my name, grade, and locker number, is that what I'm supposed to do?
Sure.
Um, I'm Don Baldwin, I'm out, I, I'm out in Lewiston, my son and I are farming just a little less than a thousand acres out there, and we milked about seven hundred cows. And, uh, we, uh, I serve on the, uh, Cub River Irrigation Board, I've been a past president of that. Uh, I have a vested interest in agriculture, uh, agriculture, I think we all need to understand, represents most of the water within the county. And, uh, consequently, it has a, is a great impact, but if you had breakfast this morning or lunch this afternoon, it was because the food and fiber that's produced by agriculture. We need to understand that, uh, resource industries are essential, and, uh, we, if we don't dig it from the ground or harvest it from the trees or grow it, all of the other industries sort of kind of slow down and grind to a halt. Water is essential to all of those activities, and, uh, I for one am very strongly, um, opposed to letting water leave our county, I, I am very much in favor of developing the water that we have in our county. And, uh, I, I don't have any bones about saying I'm very strong about preserving water law as it stands, and that agriculture is an essential portion of our society, of our, of our livelihoods, every one of us, because we all like to eat, and we all like to wear clothes and stay warm. And so for that reason, I, I have a vested, uh, interest personally, and a vested interest in the county in, uh, in the water being preserved and kept here. And so anyway, that's name, grade, and locker number for me.
Thank you, counsel, did you have any questions for?
Oh, I guess I'm willing to answer questions if anybody's got any.
No?
Have you been on the Water District for the past four years, right?
Yes, I have been on the Water District for the past four years, it's been an interesting.
And you were, you were even involved with the infancy of it too, in some of the development too?
Yeah.
On the committee?
I'm deep in one ear and I can't hear out of the other one, you got to talk louder.
Were you also involved in some of the development of it and some of the committees that we met together and?
I, I, I did meet with some of the committees, I was not officially on the committees, but the committee asked me to come in and tell them kind of what my thoughts were on several things. At the time, I was deeply involved with the project coming out of Cub River where we piped the canyon, um, coming down into, uh, into Lewiston, there's eleven miles of pipe that we put in. And, uh, that has, that has changed for the positive, uh, we, we're not losing water through evaporation, we're not losing water through, um, seepage losses, it, it stabilized the mountain where the, where the ditch used to run along the side of the mountain in Cub River, and we're not losing water to piracy. And so it's, uh, it's been a great thing for us, and they had some questions about some things like that that I was involved with, so anyway, that's, that answered your question, Dave?
You bet, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak about, um, the candidacy of, uh, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Don Baldwin.
Thank you, I didn't have my glasses on. Uh, the candidacy of Mr. Baldwin, they can come and, to the mic and address the council. Okay, seeing none, um, we'll move to Mr. Wilmore, if you'd like to come and address the council and give your same information and locker number and everything.
I'm going to make this real easy for you as far as that appointment, Mr. Baldwin is, uh, very, very qualified, and I'm going to withdraw my name. I have other ways I can serve the co, uh, committee and, and work with the Water Board, and, uh, he's very, very qualified. I just wanted to make sure that the farmers' interests were protected. This valley has an incredible amount of water, and it's being sought after by many, many people from the Wasatch Front, from developers and all over, and I just wanted to make sure that the farmers' interests, uh, were adequately protected. We've been blessed with a lot of water, and that water policy that is being developed now is going to carry forward to generations in this valley. And so I'm going to withdraw my name and appoint Mr. Baldwin, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments since this is a public hearing? Counsel, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Okay, moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have another public hearing. Okay, so we're going to move to ten D, and this is a public hearing, um, on an ordinance that will amend the county land use regarding cannabis production establishments. Chris, could I prevail upon you to give us some background on this, please?
Madam Chairman, is there a way that we could, with some of them that are waiting for the decision of mosquito abatement and the other one, could we just jump ahead quick and do an action at that, or are we falling too far behind?
I'm afraid that we're falling too far behind, so that's why I wanted to move to, to this.
And I didn't want them to be waiting too long.
Let's, as soon as we're done with this, um, public hearing, let's move to that agenda item.
The county stuff is always so entertaining that people usually don't want to leave.
If you, if you notice that Tommy Wilmore, he just left as quick as he could.
Yeah, he did, we're just too much for him. Thank you, Dave, um, Chris?
And I can give you an overview, and if, if you'd like to have more in-depth discussion later, we can do that too.
Yeah, just if you just want to give us an overview so the members of the audience know what the public hearing is regarding.
Okay, so this is in response to an adopted, uh, piece of law that the state adopted last year, took effect the beginning of this year. Um, that allows cannabis facilities to be in place for medical, um, use or, anything that, not recreational, but only about for medical use, you could grow it in the county. So right now, under the current state code and the county code, they could come to our office and submit an application, and they would be permitted to develop that in any agricultural zone, we only have one, which is a majority of the valley floor. So what we've done in, in conjunction with meeting with the, talking a little bit with the sheriff's office and with the county attorney's office, we've identified the need to create a specific overlay zone that gives the council the ability to say where this is appropriate to occur. So we're going to look at an agricultural type overlay and then also an industrial type use. So that's what this does, is it accounts for that state code, makes certain that the entirety of the valley is not open to that type of use, it can be perceived as a nuisance, and makes some specific rules attached to it. So there's your very quick general overview of what's happening with this section of code. What will have to happen is a second piece later on is we'll have to decide where this zone will be applied. So this is just step one, step two, we're going to have to go back and identify properties, we've started that, so we can bring that to you later, so you can review what might be appropriate there. But again, I don't want to get the cart ahead of the horse, this is just step one, and we, we have to establish those pieces first.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Open the public hearing, if we have anyone who'd like to address the council about this, um, ordinance, please come forward to the mic, state your name and tell us your thoughts.
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Okay, moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel, let's move down at, after the suggestion of Dave's suggestion to item twelve.
B.
D. Items twelve D and E, so item twelve D, um, approve the appointment of a representative to the Cache Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees, that's a mouthful. That person, uh, the candidate there is Jeff Ricks, what would the council like to do?
Well, I move to just waive the rules and that we go ahead and appoint Jeff Ricks with the Cache Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees.
Second.
Which we, I guess we don't have a number, twenty, twenty-one, oh, two? When it gets its ordinance number.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Jeff Ricks to the Cache Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And let's move to twelve E, resolution twenty twenty-one dash three, approving the appointment of a representative to the Cache Water District Board of Trustees, and since Mr. Wilmore withdrew, that will leave Mr. Baldwin, what would the council like to do?
I would also move that we go ahead and waive the rules and pass, uh, twenty twenty-one oh three and appoint Don Baldwin to the Cache Water District Board for another four years.
Second up.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Don Baldwin to the Cache Water District Board of Trustees, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Okay, let's go back, let's see, we would be item seven B, okay, Sheriff Jensen here, there he is, moved. Sheriff is going to give us an update on the impound facility.
Drawing, I said I would bring when we got the initial starting point going.
We should put some condos in this too.
Yeah, we'll throw a couple in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
She's 118.
She can read it.
Okay, we just barely got these back like yesterday, and we've made some tweaks to it. And like we talked about before, this certainly isn't gonna be the Taj Mahala buildings. We tried to make it look something like it is a functional, very well-operating facility. The colors aren't necessarily set, but it kinda gives you a basic design and outline what the facility would look like. Overall, and this is still a work in progress, but the building design and square footage for what the needs of Cache County are now and at least into the next few years, would be about 11,201 square feet for the entire building. As it sits right now, as you can look at the second page, it kinda goes over what the floor plan and the layout of the facility would be. And it doesn't show, I should've put it on the screen, but I'll hold my copy up. So if you look at this side of your copy, it shows where the kennels are. And we talked about building a facility to be easily expanded as we move on. That's what this blank piece over here, it would be an expansion section to add more kennels as the need arises. As it sits right now, there's 30 kennels in the back for the dogs. And up front, there's initial 15 or 20 kennels if we need it. That'd be for impound and quarantine and those kinda dogs, sick, medical dogs with the vets, put them in there. And there is currently 44 cat places for cats. Part of the discussion we've had with the cities all along is some of the cities want to have a robust cat programs in their communities, and we would like to be able to give that to them as far as the programs for their cities. But that would be a cost in a contract, a negotiation with each one of those cities to pay for whatever those cat program may or may not be. So we did include a cat section in there. And if you look right to the right of that, I think it's listed as storage. That's an exact replica of the cat thing. So if it needed to be expanded, there's a place already there to expand that out. That's all the good news. I got the drawing and I got the plans. The bad news is, is we way under shot. I shouldn't say we way under shot. The square footage hasn't changed, the design hasn't changed, the kennel size haven't changed, and the programs haven't changed. What's changed are construction costs. When we talked about this starting a year ago, it was about a $1.7 million project. It's pushing 2.5 right now. And that cost is just going to continue to increase. I've been working on it all day today, 'cause we just got that number back today. And I've called five or six different design groups and companies, and they're all coming back with about the same square footage to build this kind of a complex. And it's about $225 to $250 a square foot. And it's because of the furnishings that go in it, the flooring, the paint, the ventilation, the drains. It's not building your standard building. That's a big number to drop on you tonight, and I don't want or even expect an answer tonight, but I would like to work with Bryce and work with Cameron over the next couple of weeks to see, A1, see if I can do something with the cost and then what the money situation might look like if we move forward with this project. The second piece of this project, I don't have the drawings back for yet, but we are part of the original appeal we did to pay for the architect. It was the storage unit pieces on the backside of this. But I had them do it in two separate pieces. We would put it out, if both projects were to be approved, we would put it out to one contractor to build with an RFP to build both pieces, because it would be more cost-effective for us to have one contractor doing both. But I'm gonna have it bid out in two separate costs, 'cause it may get to the point with this one that we can do one and maybe not the other. So I wanted to break it out so it wasn't just, we're not splitting hairs somewhere down the middle if both projects were to go forward.
Now Sheriff, the storage was for things that we have to hold over that deals with records and stuff from the Sheriff's Department. Is that not correct?
Well, the storage, and we talked about that council meeting, I had Chief Deputy Billard who put out to all the different county departments on what their storage needs were.
So it might be numerous.
It's numerous and varying different sizes of what were being requested as far as storage. But there, this data is a few years old, 'cause we looked at this once before, before I was even elected. And I went around through all the county departments six years ago and asking what the storage needs were. And six years ago, I think between all the county departments, we were renting somewhere around 25 to 35 storage units at any given time, because we just don't have storage in the county. So whatever we built or don't build down there would be, would get rid of all those storage units and put it all in one secured location and climate-controlled and fenced and lighted and all the things that the county departments would be looking for for storage.
A lot of the designs here, is this, you have to follow a certain, like veterinary-approved, certain standards that you're having to approve?
Yeah, and that's what this is designed for. Because of the partnership, we may have-
Society, I mean, all these things have had input and on, that's-
Yeah, like the kennel sizes, they have to be so many square feet. The lighting has to be just right. The flooring has to be a certain kind of flooring that doesn't hold moisture or bacteria. The paints on the walls have to be a specific kind. The ventilation. Now, on the kennel side back here, which I thought was kind of a cool design, and it does save some cost, but on the kennel piece back here, you got, the kennels will be all interior, but both walls are garage doors. So you can open up the door, open a garage door and let light and ventilation into the kennel system and shut them in the wintertime, which A is it's an easier cost to deal with the garage doors than it is full construction. But it's better for the animals and better for the ventilation if you can let natural light and ventilation come through the whole facility.
And this is taking the current numbers, what we're dealing with on strays and everything that you're picking up and that, just to basically deal with what we're dealing with right now?
What this building does right now, it's bigger than what we need today. But what we don't know today is exactly what those numbers are. And we've talked about what that data is and what that data isn't for a long time. And I'm not exactly sure I can tell you what the exact data is today. I know what our impact is with our animal control, 'cause I can track our numbers. And I've talked to Logan City, which would be the other bigger animal control department. And this is bigger, I guess, for today than what we need. It won't be so when we have a designated place to do these impounds and do these clinics. It'll give us room to grow for a few years. But at some point, we're going to build that, gonna be, have to build that second pod with those other kennels.
My next question was, is that, I know when you start doing these, and we start talking, and we start thinking about these kinda things, other counties around, they start, hey, you know, would you have room for ours?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, not in the import business. I think what we would do with this facility, this would be for county, for Cache County. Now, we contract with animal control, the sheriff's office does, with eight or nine different communities that will all be part of this. Logan City wants to come and be part of this. This would be a Cache County.
Logan City shipping theirs to-
No.
Brigham area or something?
No, they've, well, I don't, they were. I'm not sure what they were doing. But here's kinda how what's worked out the last six or eight months, is Cody, who I introduced you to the vet, who wants to be part of this operation. He understands that the pinch that we're in. He's on his own, has opened up a storage unit or shelter and has kennels in there and allowed us, and the citizens pay for that service. But we have one central place now that both agencies can drop off their animals. If they don't get picked up by their owners, which are very few, he takes them to his clinic in Brigham City and goes through the adoption process. So at some point, that's not gonna be an option for us. I mean, that's a temporary thing until we decide what we're going to do with this facility. But it's been a big help to get us, to keep us over the hump until we decide what the plan for this is. Another-
For one time, Chad, we had a donor that was gonna help us out. Is that dried up?
Uh, yeah, that was from about a year or so ago, and that was a split thing between us and Humane Society, and that project's not gonna go forward. I've heard different numbers about build outs with this. Initially, everybody says, oh, it's a year to 15 months. Because we're, basically, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's a pretty simple structure other than the finishes that have to go in it. It's not a huge build. It's an expensive build. But it's not a huge build, and they think six to nine months, we could be into the facility and finished.
Will this only house cats and dogs, or is there adaptation for any others, rabbits, parrots, whatever people's got that's a pet or what?
Yeah, there, I mean, there'd be room. I think the room back there, if you look where the garage is, there's two rooms back there, and they're basically labeled "other." Now, we've picked up pythons, we've picked up snakes, we've picked up birds that got left in apartments or homes, and we've been able to find homes for those. I don't know if we could build a big enough facility. We could, we could house and adopt out the snakes and the birds, but-
Call it Noah's Ark.
Yeah, we've kinda been there. Part of what we build in here, too, that is gonna be a must, and this is the cheap part of the whole project, is to build pastures and holding stations for large animals. It just has water and shelter, because that's, that is going to be a bigger problem for us than it has been in the past. We talked before, some of the property owners aren't so hip of the deputies just opening a gate and kicking four horses loose in their pastures like they used to be letting us do that.
Yeah, the discussion I know that we've had, Sheriff, was possibly working with BATC?
Yeah, that-
And was there kind of an instruction area or anything like that within this design? I didn't quite see it. Or is it big enough to be able to bring a few students in to do their-
Yeah, that's still the original plan, and they're moving forward. And he's in, and I just met with Cody yesterday. If you look like where the garage is and look straight into the building, there's two surgery rooms, a vet room, dog ward and cat ward. He's still moving forward and still has plans to use the BATC to bring students to do their training, and also with Utah State to move forward and possibly get the vet clinic, the vet program at Utah State, rather than making them do two years here and finishing it somewhere else. So when we put this together, I put this together as the county's gonna pay for this, because all partnerships can come to an end. I mean, right now, everything sounds great, and I don't foresee that this partnership wouldn't work. I just don't want us to get five or six years down the road, and for whatever reason, that partnership doesn't work. And now we're stuck with a half a building. Or we're stuck with the building that he bought some equipment, we bought some equipment, and who owns what. So, yeah, I think my idea was we take the full hit of the cost one time, but the county owns it, and regardless of what happens, we still own the facility, we still own the equipment, and we're not getting into contest and splitting hairs over who owns what and who manages this or who manages that. I think the beauty of this whole thing is, we would staff the front end of it and deal with the contracts and the impounds and all that, and he would staff everything in the back with his, the chips, the spay, the neuters, any medical issues. That's 100% his cost, and we don't necessarily have to cross paths in the middle as it comes with the money part of it. And that, I mean, that is a big chunk. That's a big, that's a lot of square footage for the vets in the middle of this thing. And outfitting those rooms aren't, you're talking stainless steel and sinks and laboratory equipment. But we need to own that, rather than borrow and trade and-
Just a hair over 14,000 square feet.
What's that?
Looks like it's what, a hair over 14,000 square feet?
No, this whole is 11,000, 11,201.
Oh, I just took the 160 by 67 and a half, and then I took the kennel area out there and added it to it, so.
Yeah. The total square foot, the kennel piece back there is actually a little bit cheaper, 'cause you're not dealing with so many solid walls. I mean, it's an expensive piece, but you're dealing with kennels and not actual hard construction.
You know, if you were to look at this and just change a few names, you'd think you went to a human clinic.
You could.
Basically a health clinic there.
Well, you know, I think, I think even though it's expensive, I don't think we should can it just because of the cost. It's gonna be a need moving forward, long, well past me in my terms. But I think we need, the little sticker shock for me today, too, and the shock didn't get any better, as I kept calling around thinking, is that really what these things cost today? And the answer hasn't changed very much. But I wanna work with Bryce and Cameron to see for a couple of weeks what we can do with the cost, and then work with them on the financing and the payment part of it. If I could come back in a couple of weeks, we can report that information back as well.
And Sheriff, you're still looking at doing the staffing for cleaning kennels and everything with the inmates?
Yeah, that would be through the work programs and with the inmates, the maintenance part, the maintenance and sanitation part of the facility. Part of that, too, and I'm a little hesitant to do this, is to use inmates, I guess, in some of those respects. And they would love it if we put the program together and let them work with the animals. But there's so much security and so much cost and so many things that come with that to allow that. That would just be a huge expense, 'cause you basically would have to build this like you build a jail, not a dog pound, to add in all the security for the corps or the state to even allow the inmates to go back there and work. And I just don't think it's worth the cost of the county at this point.
A lot of public interaction in a place like this, isn't there?
Yeah, and if we use the inmate piece of it to give them a program, we would basically have to coordinate off the entire section of the building that they would be in. I think there's great programs for, like, the misdemeanor offenders who want to, if they need to work off hours, or we could help them with getting, through Bridgelen, getting their certificates, and help them in programs other ways that aren't so require the security that locked-up inmates would take.
Okay. Any other further questions for Chad? Okay, Chad, thank you very much.
Okay. I'll have Janine get me on the agenda for a couple of weeks, and we'll come back hopefully with some better news and better answers.
Sounds good. We look forward to seeing you again. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move to item 8A, Bear River Mental Health audited financial statements.
How many of you would like a paper copy of the audit?
I'll take one. Thank you.
I always like paper.
I'm willing to accept one. I don't know if I like it.
I'll just believe everything you say, Robin. We'll go along.
One of the, one of the requirements each year is for the local mental health authority to receive, to certify that they've received a copy of the audit and had an interview with one of the officers at Bear River Mental Health. And so I'm here to fulfill that requirement. If you turn to page six in the audit, this is the auditor's opinion, the top paragraph there. I'll just go through a few of their reports and then a few of the financial highlights, and then take any questions. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respect the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc. as of June 30, 2020 and 2019. So it was a clean audit, an unmodified opinion. Back on page 24, this is the report of, on internal control over financial reporting and compliance stuff. And so they don't, in the audit, it's not to form an opinion on our internal control, but down there at the bottom, it says, during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control and we considered, that we considered to be material weaknesses. And on the next page, page 25, the last sentence of the first paragraph, they're talking about compliance to other things. The results of our test disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Then on to the next page, this is their report to kind of the management team, and it just reports on any problems that they had. And they did not report any disagreements with management or any uncorrected or corrected misstatements. Everything was clean in the audit. Some of the financial things, back on page eight, is the income statement or the statement of activities. You can see three numbers up. The net income for last year for Bear River Mental Health was just over 1.6 million. And the majority of that was from, COVID helped a lot. The FMAP rate, what we pay for match, went down for two quarters of it. We also had fewer inpatient hospitalizations during that time. I think people were afraid to go into the hospital, especially during the first few months in the spring. And then also Medicaid expansion added a lot of revenue to Bear River Mental Health, more than what, we, there were more people, more eligible's in Medicaid expansion than we had projected. And then on page seven, just the page before that, is the statements of financial position or our balance sheet. You can see up there that cash went up significantly, counts receivable down, and prepaid expenses up. So the cash, one of the big chunks was the $1.6 million in net income, but also that reduction in receivable helped. And that receivable is when we get our Medicaid payment. It's a pre- that receivable is when we get our Medicaid payment. It's a prepaid plan. Sometimes we get our July, our July check in June, and then it's just sitting in there as, you know, and also when we pay our match. And Cache County does collect the money from the state and collects the money from the other counties. We bring the match bills over, the Medicaid match bills, and they cut the check for those. There's a review, and if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any concerns on that process?
No.
Is Cache County flowing it through? Does it?
Works well.
Were there any CARES funds used on this?
Yeah, if you look on page, page eight, we didn't have very many, but that, that top line in the 2020, that 10,940, that's CARES funds. We had another 110,000 in this fiscal year, July through December, and we've spent that. If there's no other questions, I think what I need is just this signed by everyone, and maybe a motion to accept the audit.
I know this isn't part of the, but are we going to have any knee-jerk reactions this year with correction on, you know, we get kind of through COVID and back to?
That's a great question. I'm not sure of the answer.
I don't know. That's, that's the worries that I have of things coming, you know, when the correction process happens on everything.
You know, perhaps just real briefly, there is a Senate, I think it's Senate Bill 70, where they're talking about having the MCOT, uh, Mobile Crisis Response Team go statewide, and also have receiving centers go statewide. And I think it's written in the bill that that would require, we, we got a hun- $500,000 to put in a MCOT team here last year, which the counties did not have to match. And if they, if that passed, it could require a lot of matches from, a lot more match from the county, which I know is a, a real stretch. I think that the, the directors are going to oppose it as long as it's going to require that kind of a match.
Buick is, uh, is looking at that as well and trying to get them to, talking to the bill sponsor to get them to take the match out. Sorry, go ahead.
Let me just point out one other thing on page eight. The third number down is what the county's put into this, and really, our whole funding is kind of like an inverted pyramid. The county funds match the state funds, and then those state and county funds match the Medicaid funds. And so that 451,000 that the county puts in allows us to bring in the almost 13 million to provide mental health services in the three-county area. And without that, our budget would be very small. So, thank you very much for your, what you put in.
Counsel, do we have a motion to accept, um, this audit?
It'll move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the audit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Then we can get it signed. Okay, let's move to item 8B, USU Extension. Tim, is it Katie?
Katie, correct.
Katie, and he is with the Health and Wellness portion of USU Extension. And while he's coming up, I just want to say I've been talking with him and been impressed with, uh, what his portion of extension is doing, and invited him to come and, and inform the council, because I think he's doing some really great work.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and the opportunity to come and speak. Um, we're a new part of, um, USU Extension. Um, Health and Wellness Team was developed by Dr. Ken White. Um, he saw a need for, what he was surprised at, deaths from opioid overdoses. So he actually hired our team, the five of us, about two and a half years ago, to see if we could make an impact on reducing the deaths across the state of Utah, specifically for overdoses. Um, and we, again, it's hard to measure that with all the things that happen, but we've had success doing many different things, and I think we're able to, um, at least showing some of the things that we work with individually, we're able to bring in grants, we're able also to bring in some things to help, um, those that really need it, even just in our community. I currently work with two treatment facilities, um, and we do harm reduction training is what we do, um, and we train them how to use naloxone or Narcan. I just came and spoke about it one time to the council when I first began, um, and that's been really effective, and we stopped counting at saving 12 lives, um, just in one small group of approximately 50 people. So, those two combined treatment centers. Um, so we really thought that was pretty effective. Um, we do this across the state. We have, I work with approximately 3.8 million in grants currently, um, and that's for the entire state of Utah, including what we have here in Cache County. So, some of the things that we're doing is trying to stop what's going on in Utah, and we had, you know, Bear River Mental Health is here also, which is great. So we work with Bear River Mental Health, Bear River Health Department, um, and other community members to try and reduce those incidences of mental health issues. Some of the things that we see, just in Utah, for example, um, 34% of adults reported anxiety and depression in the last year. 26 had unmet need for counseling, which we know that's important with what Bear River Mental Health is doing. 25% have a mental illness identified in the state, and we have 16% and 10% of adults experienced a major depressive episode in the last year. And substance use and opioid disorders, um, as well as overdoses have increased, but not significantly yet that we can measure. And that's going to be something that's going to change as we go through that process. And some of the things that we're doing specifically is suicide prevention training for professionals and community members with the U, um, called Carrying Connections Group. We had 120 people sign up just within our county for that service that was done. We did have, ended up having it two times. Um, it's an, actually an eight-hour training that was done for professionals, as well as community members that wanted to attend. Um, some of the stuff that we do, we've got lots of acronyms, but SAMSHA, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, NIFA, National Institute of Food and Agriculture, ROTA, Rural Opioid Technical Assistance Grants. Those are the things that we're working on currently. Um, we also have what we call a Prosper Program, or a Strengthening Families Program as part of that, with life skills training, um, that we do in, in, across our county, um, and actually across three other counties, um, in the state. And just as an example, we offered this in Brigham City to start. Um, we thought we'd have three, three families that were there Wednesday. Uh, Thursday, we had 32 sign up for the program to come and actually spend, um, two to three hours with us, um, on a Monday evening. So it was pretty amazing to have that many people. And we had our first session last evening, that's really designed to strengthen the family and the relationship between the two, um, people that are really most important, the parent or the caregiver, um, and that adolescent. It's done intermediate schools, um, in Brigham City right now. We're going to bring that up here and do a similar program, um, with Discovery Destinations. We have some funding from the Department of Health, which we're grateful for, to do some things with our county, um, starting in March. We're bringing families together again, probably online in this case, um, and do some things where we give them some, um, incentives to have those family times and spend it with us for an hour or two online. So we're kind of excited about doing that, something a little different. We also, just as an example, for the treatment center groups that we work with, um, 100% of the groups, um, attendees admitted to having suicidal thoughts and ideations. Not 10%, not 20%, 100% of the people we worked with in treatment considered suicide because of the isolation, depression, anxiety that they were feeling because of what's going on, um, in the communities and, you know, in the world even today. So that's something that we always keep in mind, what we do. And I think some of the things we do with coalitions, obviously, we work with a number of people, uh, mental health and suicide. Um, I work with a lot of the schools, um, trying to help any way that we can to give them good information. I have people that come and speak to me individually, and I just give them information. If they want, um, some help or don't know where to go, I'll direct them to Bear River Mental Health. I'll direct them to the, a counseling service somewhere, um, in the community. Um, so I think we've been able to do some really good things, made inroads in areas we didn't really expect. More news, more acronyms, NEWSAP is a Northern Utah Substance Abuse Prevention Team that I'm a part of. We're doing similar things with substance use disorders there also. I've got some handouts for you, too, if you'd like those. Um, and I think one of the things that we want to, yep, those, send those around, you're right. Thank you. And I just brought a few of those for people if they like. That's our page of information, some of our reports. Um, USU Extension, um, COVID and Mental Health Online articles. We have those on mental health and resiliency, um, on our website, USU Extension. And I'm also part of Live On, which is a statewide effort to prevent suicide by promoting education, resources, and changing our culture around suicide and mental health. Uh, we talk about living on being very important, because we know we're actually, um, one of the top states, um, in suicide deaths, especially among adolescents, and we're trying to reduce that if we can with a number of different agencies and whatever we can do to help. Um, so that's kind of what we're doing in Extension. So my role is obviously as an, uh, Extension Assistant Professor, is to educate and promote what we can, um, and, so talking with, um, Councilwoman Wurden, we're able to get some information to her, and hopefully that can be helpful to you that we're doing now. What I wanted to mention, too, is our other, um, Cache County office mates that we have, like JD Gunnel is doing a master's gardener's class with 85 online participants. So we talk about having an impact, giving people some other things to do. That's very important. Also talk about, um, Alicia Stratman, the 4-H Program Coordinator, doing things online with those youth that she's part of and people coming to her. And she prepared frames, for example, she did it herself, got wood cut and allowed, um, the students that would come and pick up the package, go home, and put it together online with each other. So it's kind of a cool thing that she was doing, some different things out of the box, trying to contribute to the overall mental capacity of the children that she's working with. We've got Jenna Dykman, who's actually a re- um, registered dietitian, uh, working with Create Better Health. We've got Blake Clark, the 4-H Outdoor Education Coordinator of Shooting Sports, engaging youth outside, doing some things that are safe, um, and teaching them to get some good skills regarding guns. Uh, Jake Hatfield, um, does agricultural natural resources for us. They have a mental health for farmers, um, grant that's allowing them to focus on mental health awareness and advocacy for farmers, ranchers, and other isolated rural Utahns, which has been really well-received across the state. Selena Willie doing Latino programs, um, and Jenny Carroll, Cash Makers, keeping youth engaged as she can, um, in Cash Makers. So, we've done lots of cool things. Um, we've got lots of interesting things that we're working with, and part of it is when I look at and see what the ranking of Utah is, uh, for mental health, Utah is usually last for the capacity and for the ability to treat people with mental illnesses. And it's not saying that somebody's not doing a great job, it's just that funding is really difficult. As we see that increasing, um, we're just trying to make a little bit of a difference as part of Utah State Extension and Utah State, excuse me, Utah State, and the grants we get are great, and allow us to do some things a little bit different that maybe we wouldn't be able to do to help our colleagues, um, out there to reduce the incidence of drug use and death from suicide. So I thank you for the chance to speak. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
No questions? Tim, thank you for taking time to come and tell us about your program. I've, I've been really impressed with what you're doing, and it's needed in the community.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. The next agenda item is 8C, Development Services 2020, 2021 Story Maps.
This should be fairly quick and to the point, is that?
I don't know if that's, uh, I hope that's accurate.
So I'm, I'm just here to let you know that.
So do I have to listen to you twice, twice, twice?
You got a typo on that.
You can do that again if you like it.
That's the most exciting part. I turned it back on. Think we're okay? Uh-oh. You're good now. So we do this each year, um, in our department, and I'm just making you aware that these have been posted, they're live. So this is kind of an overview. This is the Planning and Zoning Office. We break this down, so you can see the staff, and you can see kind of what, an overview of what's happened in the year. So if you were to look at this story map and scroll through, you can see, uh, who the staff is. Uh, one of these, Taylor unfortunately just left, but he was here in 2020, so we left him there. Um, we have someone on staff now that should be starting in the next, uh, couple weeks, just after President's Day. So we'll, we'll be able to move that person forward, and we're hopeful there. Um, but you can see who's on our staff. We can see some of the positions that we have that are empty and are going to be filled. We talk about what we do, why we do it, and then we also have some of those numbers that you might want to look at that give you an idea of how many rezones have been happening, what's this trend, what's been, what have, what have we been seeing over the years? Um, some of the things that I'll point to that are interesting, uh, the number of develop, the amount of development is increasing. It's easy to see that with zoning clearances. That's the easiest tie, because that represents, um, homes, it represents, hey, Janine, businesses, and it represents, uh, I think Janine's sabotaging me intentionally. I'm really, I'm trying to believe that. So the zoning clearances are a good indication. Um, the other thing that's interesting, as you look at this, is the, let's scroll to the next slide here, uh, the number of annexations we've been seeing and the impact that has on the county, then also, and also the communities, and how we're working those things out when we talk about, uh, transportation and how these roads are being adjusted. Um, so you can see in the last five years, we've probably done more annexations in the history of the county than they've ever done. So that just gives you an idea of what's happening right now in the valley. There's a lot of change, there's a lot of development, and a lot of development pressure. So we can talk more about that, but I'm just giving you the very quick overview and kind of touching on these pieces. These other items are going to point to some of those things. Um, I mean, the only place we really saw a big decline is going to be in our special event permitting, but that's due to the coronavirus. A lot of events were canceled over this last year. Um, so as you scroll through the rest, we're going to then look at what's coming ahead of us. We are looking at, uh, we put a couple new things in here. Um, we don't really have a county vision or mission that's outwardly stated. So as we tried to prep some stuff for our own department and divisions, so we could try to fit under that umbrella, we went back to a lot of, of what everyone else has been doing. So I reviewed all the different missions and, um, visions that are coming from the different departments in the county, then also went back to like our envision cash process, and some of these other long-range planning pieces where we have good public input, good comment from elected officials. And you'll see a presumed, um, vision and mission, which is fairly general and fairly broad enough to fit our vision and, and mission underneath. And so when you look at that, you're going to see some of the things we've identified as challenges for the Planning and Zoning Office, um, and then some of the solutions and goals to achieve or address those challenges that we're facing. Um, that's just for planning and zoning. So if, to find this stuff, and I can send this link out, that's probably the best thing to do, is if you're on the Development Services webpage, so if you scroll down to the bottom of the county's page, you're going to see this breakdown. Just click on Development Services, and this About Us tab is going to have that little story map. So, for example, let's click on GIS, and now we're going to be able to see what GIS is doing. You'll see who they are, and the same kind of a pattern. You can see what kind of stuff's going on with, how many people are using this parcel and zoning viewer. So we have a lot of these different pieces. You can see how we're interacting with the community, uh, maybe some successes, and anything we've identified as a failure or a challenge that we're addressing. So same thing here. They do have some cool, well, they have a lot of cool stuff on here. One thing I'd recommend you look at, they, they have links to things like this Fun Mapping component, where you can go in and start looking at some of the historical type of stuff that's happening, and then you can zoom in and take a look at some of those pieces. Uh, there's just some really cool stuff that they're doing. And you can see what's going on. You can click on it and get a good, oh, good idea of what's there with that picture. Um, the other department that's represented here is going to be our Trails and our Building Department. Uh, this webpage hasn't been updated yet. We'll need to work with Bart's team to update that. I think Alex will help us with those. But the Roads, Vegetation Management and Public Works, as you know, has been shifted. They're no longer under the They're no longer under the umbrella of Development Services, so they're doing a separate thing. So they're not accounted for here. If you click on their link, I think it's a broken, a broken link. I don't know if it really, yeah, it doesn't go anywhere. But if you go to Trails, you're going to be able to see all the stuff that Carly's been doing, talking about fundraising, trail building, all these different engagement and interaction pieces. There's a lot going on there also. And then you can also take a look at the Building Department, and you can really start to see what's going on with our inspections, where some of this development's happening. Let me scroll down to that. There's going to be this map that you can scroll on this legend, and you can see what's been happening so far as residential building permits occurring in the county and also in some of the municipalities that we service. So there's a lot of information on these maps. I couldn't dare go into detail with you here without taking probably a couple hours. I don't think that would be helpful. But I do encourage you to go through and look at these. There's all sorts of links you can look at for reports. There's a ton of information in here. And then we're going to go ahead and look at some of those things that we're trying to change and make impacts with. And so if you, as you go through those, as you see those, if you have direction for us, we're very open to direction and trying to make the best possible changes and improvements. So we want to be good servants for our public and for you. There's my quick overview. We're really excited with the things that are happening in our office. What we hope to do in the next year is get you a report probably in October that starts tying some of these things down to money. So when you get a budget report from us, it's going to be specific to these outcomes. So you have very clear indicators of what our intent is and how we're tying money up and how we've expended that money. So there's a very clear connection. So that's our hope, that's where we're headed. But in the interim, we're going to stay with what we've done in the past, which is that story map. And there's a lot of good info there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them now, or if you want to look at it and get back to us later, that's perfect too. That's it for me on that piece.
Chris, I have a question for you.
Yes?
Where did you come up with this idea? Maybe I'm out of the loop, maybe this is the new way of doing things, but how will it, and also how will it help the members of the public better know your department?
We hope, I don't think we get a lot of people that click on here and look at this stuff. Partly it's because of how this is configured, it's not very clear. And so our intent is to start making that more and more clear about how that engagement can happen. Another thing we've talked about doing, and I may be speaking a little out of hand here, but we've done it just internally with our office, we're trying to set up a program where we can have these little education-type classes. So if somebody comes into the county and has a question, we can encourage them to come to these, we might do them twice a year, and sit down with them, talk to them through county process, help them understand everything that's going on, and maybe reflect it back into here. The piece that's most important and valuable in my mind is the stuff we're hoping to do in October where it ties more into your budget process. So you see it, and it's part of that broader discussion, and we make that document available to the public. We hope they would engage. It's challenging at times to get the public to engage in something that can be perceived as kind of difficult to work through, especially land use is not a favorite of most folks. But if we can clarify our own process, we're going to have much better interaction there. And as we start to engage in these longer-range planning processes, we have to rely on some good public comment. So we have to develop that relationship, and I think we're on the front end of doing that. So that's our plan, is to start exploring all sorts of avenues to make that happen. And that's in our goals, you can read through some more detail there that we've identified, but we hope to make some of those ideas work.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, some of the questions that, you know, the average person out there says, okay, I got a question, can I build a home here? Could they go to the map, this story map type system and say, hey, can I build a home here? And what is it that I have to do with my costs and all that stuff, rather than, and they could look at some of the possibilities versus come down and have, you know, pay a fee first and then find out that they can't, or, you know, that's what I'm wondering, is how can they clarify a lot of this stuff?
That's a great question. We've been trying to fix that for about ten years.
Oh.
Yeah. So it used to be we'd research back to nineteen fifty-eight and move forward. Now we research back to two thousand and six because we've cleaned up so much process and things. But what we've most recently done over the last two, maybe three years now, is we have a tool on this parcel viewer. And if you haven't used it before, it's this little orange circle up in the corner. This is our first step there. If I were to look up a parcel, does anyone know their parcel number? That would be amazing if somebody knew their parcel number. Let's see if this is a real number, but if I click...
I'm in book eight.
I'm in book four.
If I click this button and I search, hopefully this is a real number, can't recall. What this does is it's going to look at every layer that we've identified in the GIS layers, and it's going to print off digitally a PDF. So if I click on that PDF, it's going to tell me the information about the property. Oh, that's our property. Look at that, that's a county building. It's going to tell me who owns it, it's going to tell me if it's legal. This one's in the city, so all it tells me is it's contact Logan for applicable regulations. If we're in the county, it would tell me if it was a legal parcel or not, or if it appeared to be based on those standards. And then as you scroll through, it's going to identify right here, maybe I should pick a different one that shows it, it'll identify if there's any wetlands, if there's act protectionaries, if there's canals, if there's any type of sensitive area impact to development. What it doesn't include, this is the next piece we're working on, is roads. How does this relate to roads? What are the impacts tied to that, especially now that we've updated our road manual? We've talked about this with Carrie and with Matt, how we could tie those types of things into this so we could do what Dave has kind of expressed a question about. We want to move that direction, so you can just click on it, do your due diligence, see what the issues might be, even down to the point that you know what the zoning might allow, and you could just get pointed back to a use chart. So that's where we're headed, that's what we have the same kind of vision of how to make that work, just not there yet.
And I know that's what the public is continually asking. Something very simplified.
Yep.
You know, a sheet says these are by steps for this property. And as they complete those steps, then it's all said and done. That's what they're, I hear that continually, so. Simple, some clarity upfront.
We want the same thing.
Yeah. And they all want it with a smile.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris, appreciate that. Okay, we need to go to ten A, set a public hearing for our alcohol ordinance. Counsel, I set this as a ability to set a public hearing. We can still talk about it if we want to, we can't pass it. I thought it would be good if the public had a chance to weigh in on this. Of course, it's going to be a two-part. The first part would be to pass this ordinance that would allow for wine manufacturing, and then the second part would be the land use part of it that would require a public hearing between, before planning and zoning, before it came back to us, once the land use portion of it was drafted. So we can set this public hearing, we could also discuss anything regarding this if we want to.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we set a public hearing for February ninth twenty twenty-one at five thirty to move over ordinance twenty twenty-one oh five.
Now, I'd be happy to second that, but I just want a little clarification. So this is the one, we're passing the, we're adopting the state alcohol code into the county, is what this is saying. And then after we adopt the whole code, then we get to adopt the different licenses, and this is for winery manufacturing. So this is, we can have the public hearing February ninth, and then weigh the rules and vote on it if we want to, that day.
Yes.
Then after that, we're going to go to the land use piece, and is that where everybody's arguing back and forth on the percentage of grapes that need to be grown on site?
Yes.
And that's going to be done in the Planning Commission first?
Well, we can give some input on that, but...
Do we give direction on that now or after we vote for this? What would be best?
I think it would be out of order to give that direction with, in this specific discussion, because this just relates to allowing winery manufacturing to occur, and then we have to come in and do the details later.
Okay.
So...
So I'll second. That's a long way to do that.
No, that's a good question. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing for February ninth at five thirty PM to consider ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, don't have any pending action, but we have initial proposals for consideration of action. So item twelve A, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one, which is amending portions of Title seventeen regarding cannabis production establishments. Chris?
Can give you a little more detail now, and hopefully if you have questions, please address those. Really, this comes back to the state's adoption of that piece of code last year. As I stated earlier, and they adopted a lot of pieces that restrict where this type of operation can occur. So for example, it can't be within a thousand feet of the community location, it can't be within six hundred feet of a district zone primarily residential. We only have two zones that are that, and that's RU two, RU five. Our agricultural zone is not primarily residential, that's a secondary or tertiary even use in that zone. Some of the stuff we talked about, that I talked about earlier, is this creates this situation for the county that if we don't set up a separate zone, it can be applied anywhere in the agricultural zone or an industrial zone. And so that's most of the county, well, most of the developed county. Most of the county is forest recreation, so that would be excluded. But as an agricultural type use, most of the valley floor would be impacted by that. Let's see. So what you have before you in a code form is, having reviewed this through a couple meetings with the Planning Commission, is a possible scenario where we would adopt, the council has the option to adopt a overlay zone, so this can be applied to an entirety of a parcel or a specific portion of a parcel. And then it also identifies a use type, a couple of definitions which just point straight back to the state code for cannabis and industrial hemp, and a use chart update that would include that cannabis production establishment in the overlay zone. And another part of the state code is, is we don't get to assign it as a conditional use permit, it has to be permitted. So it's just identified as though we're an agricultural operation that may be, from how we've drafted this, more of a nuisance perhaps than some other uses. And then sets up some very specific parameters in the seventeen-ten, which is our supplemental standards, where then we go into the detail of saying, you have to have a license from the state first of all, which is a given, but we're reiterating that here. It has to be on a minimum of ten acres of property. Some of the other pieces are, the big piece is it has to be inside an enclosed structure on a permanent foundation. And that's really starting to address not number four in those supplemental standards where not only does it have to be inside, but they have to set it up so that any odors coming from that are controlled. Now, the big question that came up with the Planning Commission was, don't we already do this? We already have hemp in the valley, it has its own odor and smell, absolutely it does. This is more specific to the medical marijuana, that's the permitting that they have to get through the state. Most of those are going to occur inside anyway. This is not, the question from them was, this seems a bit onerous to request. But for them to get the right grade and control on their crop to produce a medical-grade level of THC or whatever their use might be there, they have to have pretty high levels of control. So most of them are going to operate inside anyway, whether it's with a hydroponics-type facility, and they'd also need to do something that's probably year-round. Our climate does not benefit that type of a use. So with the review of the Planning Commission, their recommendation, this has come to the council now for your review and direction. Again, this is step one. Step two means we'll have to come back and identify where this zone is applicable. Where does it make sense? Again, we've got some of that drafted already, we'll get you a map that shows some of our ideas there on what properties may be most suited for that, and then we could propose how that zone could be applied with those property owners. I anticipate that's something we'd have to reach out to them, propose it to them. If they were opposed to being included on that, I would say, I'd recommend pulling them off. But we have to identify some zones that could receive that type of use to meet the state code requirement.
Chris, haven't we already got one of these, one of these farms going in Cache County right now?
We have several hemp operations.
Yep, we do.
Yep.
Isn't this the same thing, or am I behind times?
It's separate, this is for medical marijuana. So with the hemp operation, or even someone that's doing CBD oil, hemp is just going to be for the material. The CBD might be if they take the hemp, dry it, and extract the CBD oil. Then they have to be below a certain level of THC in each of those, and that's tested by the state. If they exceed it, the state will actually take it, or they can take their license. There's some different parameters there, I don't know all of those. But right now, all we have in our valley is, at least that I'm aware of in Cache County that are legal, is hemp operations.
Now, the hemp farm that's not very far from where my resident is has a big fence around it, it has security, has security cameras and whatnot. What is it used for?
The hemp?
CBD oil.
Well, there's hemp and there's CBD oil. The hemp is used in all sorts of things.
Fabric, ropes.
The most recent one I heard was talking with our chief building official, Paul, and they actually use hemp fibers in a type of cement. It's not even cement, but they use it for construction. So the hemp's used in anything from ropes to jewelry to, you name it, hemp's used. The CBD oil is more kind of a, I guess it's a medical, most people use it in a medical sense. But what we're talking about is probably higher levels of THC with the medical marijuana, more than point three THC.
So this will be actually what we're talking about in this ordinance is that we will, we will allow medical marijuana to be grown, which is the stuff that, you know, you smoke, is that for, that you smoke for medical purposes?
Me personally? I'm just kidding.
I'm just saying, is that what that's meant for? It's for patients that are given the permission to smoke marijuana for medical reasons.
Yes.
Somebody sneaks in there during the night and harvests a bunch and get, have a really good party, right?
Probably could, yeah. I think you're right.
Right, so now we're talking.
And this is the type of stuff, though, that the state has limited. The last number I recall was eight or ten, I can't remember at the state level, they only give out that many licenses.
And that's the biggest hurdle?
Yes.
That they have to go through.
Because just to apply, it's a hundred, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to just apply. And you have to meet all these...
Is there any more existing permits that they'll give out? I heard they were all gone.
I thought they were all gone, but then I heard they were going to raise it. I don't know where that's at with the legislature, if they're going to pursue changing that or when that might change. What we want to protect on our end with the county is the state's already opened the door wide open. We want to refine where we want it to happen within the county. If we're okay with, if the council's okay with it being anywhere within the A-ten zone, we don't have to do anything. It works with, under our current code, it would fit with whatever existing agricultural operation standards would be there. If you want to refine it, the state has said you have to specify a certain zone, and you have to...
So when we go do that then, we probably need some CBD oil to deal with my unhappiness with the state most of the time. So we do this, we go through, we say, okay, we're going to permit an A-ten zone. How far can we shrink that down?
With the overlay zone, you can shrink it to whatever you want. There just has to be...
We can give it a few acres right next to prison.
Sure. It's whatever you want to define there. It has to be reasonable, right? It can't just be so obstructionary that the state looks at it and says, no, that doesn't, that doesn't, it's not, it doesn't work.
Because they're eminently reasonable. Right, so, okay. Sorry, I shouldn't have...
Yes. I can't comment. But that's the intent, is there needs to be some direction from the local jurisdiction as to where this makes sense. Otherwise, the state has said it applies everywhere. So we want to think about where we want, I would recommend we think about where that makes sense. And this sets it up so we can do that.
Got one more question. Is with the university in their backyard, you know, and they do a lot of research, and I think they've even jumped into the hemp research. Do, would this apply to some of their, you know, applications that they want to do research on? Will they have to go fall under the same ordinance?
If they came out to the county? If they came out to the county, and it's on their property, they get to do a lot of stuff without a review from the local jurisdiction. So that's a good question I'd like to look into, Dave, I'd like to do more digging there. I know our code specifically exempts state and federal government from meeting any requirements of our jurisdiction. I don't know how that starts to apply when we start talking about cannabis. That's a bit of a wild card, because there's federal rules and there's state rules that aren't friends.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And so I feel like it's a little sticky, I'd like to dig a little more.
That's just a thought, it just kind of hit me, is, you know, that if we have one standard for everybody, and then all of a sudden, well, it'd be for research, you know, and things like that, but, you know, 10 acres, these kind of things, to where you're out away from everybody and trying to protect the public. We'd sure hate to have that same thing going on just for research within, you know, 100 feet from, you know, another institution, or another, or living residential area, or whatever it may be, just because they're university. And it's nothing against them, it's just, if we're going to protect one, we need to protect everybody in some ways.
I think they'd still need to meet state requirements. But those other finer details that I've identified may not apply, but I will look at it.
Chris, I have a question. Is, let's say, an elementary school or a high school, is that considered residential?
That one's going to qualify as a community location. So the residential zone, sorry, district zone, primary residential, there's a 600-foot buffer. For something that's a community, community location, it's a 1,000-foot buffer. So they identify public or private kindergarten, elementary, middle, junior high or high school, licensed childcare facility, preschool, trade or technical school. So those are specific, but you're going to hear some broader stuff here in a second. Here's some more specific ones, church, public library, public playground, public park, a youth center, or other space, space used primarily for youth-oriented activities, a public recreational facility, a public arcade, or homeless shelter. Licensed after July 1st, 2018. I'm not sure if that's just for the homeless shelter or not, it might be. So there's a pretty broad spectrum of things they've excluded. But for most of these, they want to be away from people, so there's less likelihood of maybe theft or vandalism occurring with those facilities.
So two questions, I had a hemp grower contact me, and the hemp grower, JD, you know what we're dealing with, but there's a lot of things that go into production of hemp and the processing of it. But he asked me, he's like, okay, so we have these guys growing medical marijuana, which is smokable marijuana if it's in the right place. He's like, so we're encouraging them to build a building to grow this stuff? What's the monitoring that that is going for medical marijuana? Rather than certain portions of that being snipped off and shooting to a state that is allowing recreational marijuana? Then there becomes a difference of which is producing the most money, and how's that being watched? Have we encouraged production of recreational marijuana in the county in certain areas? And how are we monitoring that?
Yeah, the monitoring piece is a good question. Primarily, the state will monitor that, we don't.
State Department of Ag that.
We don't have, yeah, it'll be Craig Butters, actually.
But how much are they going to drill down to the counties that are licensed on that? That's, you know, that's this guy's question.
I would need to look at it again to be 100% sure, but I, I think that the regulations of the Medical Cannabis Act virtually have those growers having to report every plant they grow. Their tracks will get by plan pretty much. It's very heavily regulated in that regard.
And, but to Nolan's point, one of the things that I'm concerned with, because I'm not necessarily opposed to medical marijuana at all, but I am concerned that you get in there, and I think it's really tied on a lot of the growers, right? I don't think they're going to be moving product out the back, like selling beer out of the back of a grocery store or anything. But there is, you get legal marijuana in play, and there, the illegal trade does go up pretty much everywhere that it's been. You go and you talk to the folks in Colorado where they're grow, they have legal grow operations, and they've seen the illegal grow operations increase. I mean, to think that it's legal and then the illegal stuff goes away, you get a commensurate increase in illegal traffic with the legal stuff. So I think, I'm, you know, you're great, you put up that thing, you're monitored by the, by the Department of Agriculture, that is fine. It's the stuff going on around the edges, which is why I would like to see it shrunk to the smallest possible thing that you can then watch fairly closely because of the stuff that grows up around it. To pretend that you're, there's not a trade-off there, I think is just naive.
I'll point to our map when we were trying to identify properties where the zone might be applicable, and using different layers like maybe agricultural protection, or agricultural type related items to restrict where those zones make sense. And the first time we looked at it, we were like at 1,000 parcels, and I thought that was too many for what would be reasonable for the council. So we asked, added another layer, and that restricted it down to like 50 parcels out of 30,000 in the county. That's tightening up pretty good, meeting all these state requirements for buffers and all these other pieces. And what I'm going to do is bring back maybe two or three scenarios to the council, this part two, so you can look at it and see what makes sense, or you can say, I like where you've restricted this, but why haven't we looked at this? Or are we also considered, maybe it's dependent on the type of road that serves it, or maybe it's dependent on proximity to something else? I think those are all reasonable things to consider, on where that makes sense.
John? Yes, please.
The, the Medical Cannabis Act says that if we have an ag zone, or any ag zones, then, then the, the medical cannabis can be grown in any of those ag zones, unless you designate a specific ag zone, that it, it can be grown in this one, but not in that one. So the difficulty that we've had in looking at that is we only have one ag zone. And so we, we can't say, well, we're going to do it in this part of the A-10, but not this part of the A-10, because we just have the A-10 zone. So our creative workaround is to say, well, let's do an overlay zone, call it an ag overlay zone. So we've created another ag zone that's an overlay. And then we need to have you say, where are you going to overlay that? I don't think that you can pass the, an ordinance, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the latest version recently. My recollection, though, is that it would prohibit it in the A-zone, A-10 zone. If we prohibit it in the A-10 zone and don't say where there's an overlay that it is allowed, I think we're out of compliance with state law. I think you've got to do those at the same time. And I think that, to be fair, we're making a, we're taking a creative solution. And I think that someone could challenge and say, you still don't have an ag zone that allows this, because an overlay zone is not an ag zone. And our argument would be, no, this is an ag overlay zone. And you'd see how that, those two arguments play out. Until you have a new general plan and may decide that the county needs more than one type of ag zone, I think this is the best solution in the interim, if you want to say we don't want it in the whole A-10.
So can we, do we have to wait for the general plan? Why can't we come up with like an A-410 zone? And then have it be an acre?
You could do that.
420, which one are we?
420, sorry. Yeah, I was still on the 420. I was still on the 10.
Yes.
We can go to the 420 zone, and just make it a.
Yes, you could, you could immediately create another type of ag zone and say, that's the ag zone where medical marijuana can be grown. My, my impression has been that there would be waiting until the general plan before you create new types of zones. And so this, this was kind of the fix in the interim. But I can't guarantee that it would withstand a challenge. We've got a good argument that it would. My other concern is just with the 10-acre part. Because I don't, and this takes me out of the legal commenting, but having been part of this process, I'll say, I don't envision 10-acre buildings. So if we're saying, you've got to be on a 10-acre parcel, and you build a, maybe a three-acre building or a one-acre building, does the rest become a weed patch out in the county? And that maybe the, if you're going to require that it be in a building, that you don't need a minimum acreage, because your odors would presumably be retained within the building and so forth. I, again, I've said it already, but to say, I worry that requiring 10 acres will end up with large uncultivated land around a building that's growing medical marijuana. So those are a couple of my thoughts.
So is just the buffer, just to have that space?
That's been my impression as I've kind of watched it go through the process.
There ought to be, if you're going to ever go that way, then there's got to be a relationship with square footage of the building versus acreage. You've got to have, if the building's going to grow, the acreage has got to grow.
I think from that, I think from the discussion with the planning commission, that was the intention, was to create more of a buffer. If you were to reflect back on our, most of the things we've tied to agriculture, it's that five acre, because that's the Farmland Assessment Act, that's that number. And it clearly identifies that piece as agricultural.
That was part of our concern, is if you bring it down to an acre, but get, throw it in the agricultural area or the A-10 area, what have you got? You put an industrial building in the agricultural area. So his point, next to the prison or wherever, gets better from that, and that's what we talked about, is bringing it closer into an industrial area rather than the agricultural area.
JD, did you want to say something? You want to come up here? Well, I think, if you want to come up here, I'll let you, just say your name. Since you're part of extension, I think we can allow it.
He's an extension specialist now.
Yeah, he's a specialist.
I wasn't planning on talking, but having hemp grown in my backyard, where there's only eight permits in the state right now, that could go up. It's very lucrative. And having talked to, to the Utah Department of Ag, the problem is that there's a lot of out-of-state interest on those permits. So there's big money that comes in with medical marijuana. And so if you just do an overlay, there's nothing to stop big corporations from putting it wherever they want. And I would almost suggest that if you do an overlay, then give yourselves the leverage in the future to have like a special permit process, so that someone can't just come in and say, I bought this 10 acres, it's in the ag zone, and I'm going to do what I want. So you almost have to have an ace in the hole, per se. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because even with hemp, the traffic coming down our street, and the 2:00 in the morning guys running across the field and taking plants thinking they're going to get high, there was a lot.
Smoking like crazy and whatnot.
Getting mad because they didn't get high. So I think there's a lot of misconception, but I think that's why the state started with so few permits, is because of that out-of-state interest. And I think you kind of have to think the worst-case scenario with opening up to this. And it's not just greenhouses. Medical marijuana can grow outside from June to October.
I've been contacted by growers from Washington wanting to rent my ground to do the medical marijuana, I mean, these guys are.
They're chomping at the bit.
Yep, they are driven, they've got plans, they've got everything, they want to rent and be here.
And as a, as a citizen, I would want to know that there was a check and balance to at least have a public say. Anyway, sorry.
Thank you.
Can I say your response?
I got one question.
Yeah, I can.
Is there an option to not even allow it?
No. If your option is to not allow it anywhere, you allow it everywhere. Because of the state requirement that says, because of what John described earlier, because we have one agricultural zone, the state said, and this is agricultural and industrial zones, we just don't have a lot of industrial zones. If we don't adopt something that refines where it goes, it applies to the entire A-10 zone, and it's permitted.
By the state.
So what JD talked about there, what's critical is, with the overlay zone, it does give you a check. If someone came in and said, we want to put this here, it gives the council the authority to say, we don't think that's a good spot. And you can deny the request for a rezone, like any other rezone. But once you approve it, it's exactly like he did say, they can put it in and it can function that way. So the piece that's critical here, and we'll have to come shortly on the heels, or even at the same time as this, if we'd like to do that, is we, we have the discussion about this piece, then we get the other piece forward to you, and we have the discussion about where do we establish a zone. We have to pick out some parcels, and we have to come to some agreement there, and then establish that overlay zone in those areas as we adopt this piece. Then that, then that might do better at covering our bases.
That certainly would do better at covering the bases. And it would probably be a stronger legal position if, once you decided, here's where we want the overlay zone, if instead of making it overlay, you just created this other type of ag zone, and just say, that's our A-whatever zone, and then we can just stay in.
We could look at that.
Then we don't have to make the argument that, no, that's an agricultural overlay. You just made to say, no, that's our other ag zone, and that's all that the state requires. As long as it's not so miniscule that we essentially have on. Because, kind of my comment here is, unfortunately, the state has left no ace in the hole. Once you designate a zone where it can be, they can have no conditional use permit or anything like that. So, once you designate the zone, it is a permitted use. And if you only have one ag zone, it's allowed in that ag zone, so that's where we are at. If an application came in now, that could have it anywhere on the valley floor. And so this, this is, how do you limit that if you're wanting to limit that?
How miniscule is miniscule? What bigger definition? I'd love, I mean, that's just one thing, as we look at this, I'd love to know, in my mind, is how many, how small can we get?
Yeah, that's a question I have to.
Before they're like, oh, you didn't, you made it impossible. I'd just like to be, I'd just like to be right next door in a townhouse to impossible.
The state limited it to eight licenses.
But how, how big is a license?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Quantity is a license?
I think that's a location, isn't it? Is that, we'd have to look, I don't know.
So it's unlimited quantity if you have a license?
Call it good.
Yeah, we haven't.
You know, but that would be scary if that is, there's got to be some sort of a, you know.
It would be very interesting to know that how many acres is tied up with each permit. Then we'd have a understanding of the volume of it.
According to the growers that I've talked to in Washington and even in Idaho, they're pretty good size.
They're pretty good-sized tracks of land.
Yep. I mean, they've even gone to the point that they're not doing building, they're doing tards and stuff and lights over this area.
Like a greenhouse.
It's like a greenhouse, but it's not a building. And so he's like, we can construct that in three weeks and have plants growing. And they tricked the plant in with lights, and so now you got lights out there that it's growing all the time. And he's like, we can do that, I think it's water-intensive plant, is it not? So they're going to have to be where there's irrigation all the time, rather than in the dry farm area, but.
So those of you who are very active in UACT in the legislative session here, I forget what the bill number is, it's a House bill, that is aimed at protecting hemp growers, that if passed would say that local governments may not restrict what kind of crops are grown in an ag zone. And that's that they, they want landowners to have freedom to use their lands, and be able to grow them. Well, it conflicts with what we're talking about right now. If that bill were to pass, then you can't say this ag zone can have medical marijuana, this ag zone can't, because that law would say you can't restrict what crops are grown in an ag zone. So to the extent you've got some sway with UACT to make that a priority, to not have it passed, that's one that the Civil Act, the civil attorneys are looking at. And I'm going to be pushing that, we ought to be able to do some local decisions, even about crops. But the flip side is that you'll have the ag folks say, if it's a legal crop, let me grow it on my land.
Well, isn't that kind of a funny way to say it? Because it's not a federal, I mean, the feds say that's an illegal plant. But the state says it's legal. So that's still questionable if they say it's a legal plant, isn't that a legal question? As an attorney, wouldn't you, couldn't you make the argument that it's questionable with that? that's a legal plant?
Oh, it's illegal from a federal standpoint. Is our US Attorney's Office gonna go prosecute the farmers? That's the question.
Yeah, well, I mean, because I look at it from another thing, you can't put...
The state's trying to prosecute because it's legal under state law.
Yeah.
And I don't think the feds are going to prioritize that.
Probably not.
Prioritize that.
This is just, this is a mess.
Well, the one challenge that you also have with this overlay zone that we're talking about, suddenly that really makes that land highly more valuable than that land that isn't under the overlay zone. So we might see a lot of pressure to have a particular area in that, in that overlay zone.
Just because of the lucrative crop that it can be grown on. And that's kinda concerned, too. How are you gonna deal with that?
That's where you guys have to stand up to the pressure. I'll come and ask you to sort of overlay it.
So this will be the AC, the AC zone then, for that one crop?
That'll just be considered the marijuana area. Virtually what we're talking about, and it's an area where we'll grow marijuana and cash cut it.
So would it be a good idea to pass this? So that we have an overlay zone, even though we don't have the details, and once we get those details, then we could actually change it to its own zone?
I think if you pass it without applying it anywhere, we go out of compliance with state law.
We'll still be out of compliance, so I'm with you there.
We're in compliance now, because it's allowed in the A-ten.
Yes.
So we're in compliance now, but if we say it's not allowed in the A-ten unless there's an overlay, and we don't put that overlay anywhere, then we're out of compliance with state code that says you've gotta allow it in your ag zone.
So your advice would be to pass them simultaneously, if that was the way we did it?
That's my advice. And we can make, I should step back and say, we can make the argument that, "No, we do have a zone. We have it overlaided anywhere, but we've got a zone, and they can come in and ask us to overlay it." I think that that's not quite what was intended with this state extension, and so we may have our...
That was a question I asked John, we were discussing this, and it's essentially saying, "They can ask, but you can say no every time." So that means, in a sense, you've just obstructed that from occurring, so it puts us in a bad situation.
So that's why you don't overlay it, because you actually don't overlay it.
So what are the, what are some of the requirements for growing medical marijuana? How much water, how much power, how much spray, fertilizer, all of those things that go into the input? And then do we draw that to an area and say, "These are the most likely areas that have those inputs"? If it's a lot of power, because when I talk to those guys at Washington, power was huge, because they wanted the lights, the fans, and the controls and stuff. So if you start looking at that, does that bring you to the point of saying, "Okay, it only makes sense in the ag zone near..." But then you gotta take it away from a certain neighborhood, schools, and all the others, and so you start excluding from those points, and then you end up in a particular overlay of certain areas, do you not?
You do. And that's what we'd like to give back to use this map, so you have an idea of what we've used to restrict.
Yeah, the inputs, then the restrictions, and then here's the considerations.
It'd be good to have that list, and you can start to look at that list and say, "This makes sense, or what about this, and this probably shouldn't be there." You can start to weed those things out. We haven't looked at power consumption, we haven't looked at water consumption, those aren't specific land use-type issues.
But you can identify where there's irrigation water or whatever, and...
Yep, we can identify those pieces. Some of those they can add later, depending if they can purchase water rights or get that type of stuff to bring it there. But I think you're right, in that we can start identifying and excluding other properties.
I don't think you could buy a water right and move it for irrigation right now in the state canyon?
I don't know.
I don't think you can.
So conceivably, if we did another zone, we didn't do an overlay, we just came up with a certain area and said, "This is where it's zoned."
So with other zones?
How quick can we do that?
Say that again.
A new zone.
You could pursue a new zone and set up a separate zone, almost use the same language here, instead of calling it an overlay, you just say it's a full rezone.
For these parts.
You'd update that language fairly easily.
Okay.
Call it a specialty crop zone.
We can, we can pin it down, I don't know what we'd call it, but that makes sense.
A four-twenty.
That zone will be higher than all the other zones.
Oh, my.
Well, the challenge in the whole thing will be who gets a permit. That's where the challenge is gonna be. So few of them, but I don't know if we need to be scared of it being everywhere.
But the volume of the permit is what I'm worried about.
Yeah, it's a good one.
You know, that, what does that really encompass? If someone is willing to put out a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go after this permit, there must be some pretty good volume...
Yeah.
That they're able to produce, and/or, like, are they allowed to take so many ton off of it, you know, so many quid off? I don't know, whatever it is.
And how, how much can they, once they get their permit, how much can they continue to expand? That's all the questions that would be in my mind.
And that's a great question, because it's identified as a permitted use.
That's right.
Typically, with the conditional use, they'd have to come back and talk to the planning commission and talk about impacts. But with a permitted use, there's not that discussion.
Well, there must be quite the volume, because the rate they're offering to lease
ground for far outweighs what any other farmer who's growing hay or grain is paying for.
That's what I would guess, is that it's so lucrative that...
Yeah, that others are gonna say, "Whoa, come on, rent my ground."
They suddenly, they're in the position to go out and buy all the land they want, because they pay so much more money than anyone else. And it's a very interesting thing.
It's interesting how the hemp, the hemp thing went big. Everyone kinda jumped into it, and then they couldn't find processors to actually get the, to squeeze the oils and things like that. I knew one guy that went and harvested his hemp, and he went and sat it on the fence to dry for a little while, because he wasn't able to get in anywhere for quite a while. Well, the guy on the other side turned his cows out into the field. He lost quite a bit of hemp. So, yeah, getting high on milk, our cows are on grass, you know. It was really interesting, and that was a huge, some of them, matter of fact, they had it sitting in places for like a two year, I think some still haven't even got their pressed yet, from the two years ago.
It'll be interesting, because they say the state is limiting where they can go and process that CBD on the hemp, and so they're petitioning the state to open that up so they can market it outside. I know three growers who are saying, "They gave us permission, but yet they've restricted our market. So if that market opens, this guy by us says it's lucrative."
Wait, the state's restricting stuff?
Yeah, as far as...
You're telling me, Sean.
Getting it out of here, so...
All right, counsel, well, what would you like to do with this ordinance?
I think we've killed it there, we've stomped it to death.
I'd like to see what we just talked about, getting the information, getting books and everything.
This is still the initial, isn't it?
Yeah, this is still the initial.
So I, we need to digest a little bit more of it and get some more detail and maybe answers to some of these questions that we've been asking tonight. Personally, I, I'm not ready to vote on this.
I'm not either.
I don't understand it.
Well, I'd like to explore the idea to make this a base zone and not an overlay zone. And then also, there's a couple other tweaks I think we need to make in looking to the question about the volume, and how that, how the state controls those pieces. I think they do, I just don't know the details to tell you. So I'd like to look at that and see how that's monitored or addressed.
And that volume would be sales, or growth, or ground, or either?
Yeah, or all of the above. I don't know. The other piece...
It could even be a medicinal crop zone, because there, this may not be the only thing that's coming down the pipe called medicinal mushrooms.
That's coming up next.
And then also bring back, for the next time, if we're gonna run these concurrently, the overview of the map, where parcels might be affected. So what we did before with the planning commission is, you're gonna get a list of restricted things that we used to restrict where this might go, and then also a map that shows the parcels that are affected.
Good.
So you can see it and see the list. So we'll put that together and give you some different options, and bring it back whenever you'd like. Most of that's done, so it's not a lot of heavy lifting on our end.
Sure, that part wasn't included, or that might have to get brought back to you.
We took it to planning commission, and they reviewed it, but it was not adopted as part of this. So I think you're right.
But, you know, and that's an interesting thing.
We could just strike the overlay and rename it a zone and go forward, we'd have to send it back to P and Z. Yes, okay.
That's good enough.
I would say, words, if you would like, this might be the fastest way to do this, is with the information you've given, maybe we just take that back to the planning commission, build it as a base zone, address the volume issues, and really refine the restricted areas map, and come up with three different options, and present it that way with the planning commission, have them see if those three options make sense to forward to the council, and then let those things come to you as a full package. So you get to see a base zone, you get to talk about volume, and then we'll talk about specifics of where this might occur. But then it's already been vetted through the commission.
Does that sound good, counsel?
That's...
Do we need a motion on that, John, or can we just do that?
Can we grow it on top of a landfill?
Just do that.
Sure you could.
A little recreational forest, they'd already been growing recreational stuff.
That's right, doesn't that count?
I don't mind the two or three growers, because they're there, they're, it's the, bring these guys.
Okay. All right, Chris, thank you. Okay, we'll move to 12B, ordinance 2021-3, an ordinance amending sections of our code relating to the use of Robert's Rules of Order. John, can you give us a little presentation on that?
I don't remember the exact dates, but the first edition of Robert's Rules of Order was adopted, was published in the mid-1800s. Under our county code, you're technically supposed to be operating under that original mid-1800s edition of Robert's Rules of Order. So this is just to say, we'll, we'll have our, we'll refer to the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order, the way you conduct business.
Thank you. And by the way, I have purchased the latest edition, Edition 12, and I think that's in your office, Janine. Okay, so anybody?
I heard this was in the clerk's office.
Oh, we can walk it over to the clerk's office.
Edition 12, that's where we're at?
Edition 12, yeah. And there's also like a smaller book, too, that just kinda sums it up. If any of you are just dying to know what's in that book.
And then there's also...
Great reading.
Does this still say generally?
Gina, even better, there's a nice summary sheet that you can keep in your materials that kind of summarize and make it so you can follow.
There's the Quick Study little version here that folds out laminated, it's just downright cool, and it's the funnest thing to read you've ever read, I think.
Make sure, better make sure that's consistent with the new edition, because they changed stuff in there. I know way too much about that. It's got to be.
John, I was reading a bill earlier, and it said, "Generally follow Robert's Rules of Order," is that still the case?
I don't recall. I hope it says generally, because if it says literally, I don't know of any organization in, you know, it is...
Unless you hire a parliamentarian.
Yeah, you'd have to hire a hundred thousand dollar a year parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian, yeah, just to keep things straight.
I think that the spirit of the law should prevail, as we try, as we do these things, because neither one of us have been to parliamentary school law.
Hey, I have been, though, to Robertville, South Carolina, where he was born.
Okay, you're now the expert.
And came out of, so boom, I'll consider myself an expert.
Mark, would you have that text in front of you? Do you want a motion on that?
For what?
Do you have it up for the, for the Robert's Rules?
For the red line version, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Does this generally be subject to the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order?
Yeah, yeah, generally. And the rules are general, too.
I will say this, I think the council's done a very good job over the years of being fair, letting parties, and that's what the rules go to, is to let both sides be vetted and people hear information. And the council's always been more than fair in the public and to each other, and allowing people to speak to issues. And so I, you've lived under the spirit of those Robert's Rules for as long as I've been here.
Thank you, James.
Well, I move that we, we guess waive the rules, and then we approve ordinance 2021-03.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we waive the rules and approve ordinance 2021-03, which amends sections of our code relating to the use of Robert's Rules of Order. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item of business is ordinance 2021-04, this is 12C, and this is dealing with a whole bunch of sections of county code that I won't read, relating to county records. John, can you give us a update on this?
I hadn't planned to be the one to do this, but this is the, this is the grammar ordinance. My understanding is that this does two main things, it just points us to the state code on how you do grammar, and it makes Jess our grammar officer, or his office, the grammar office. And Jess may have some things to say about that.
I have some concerns.
We're ready for this. My office is ready, we've been gearing up for this for the past couple of weeks. We've been taking on a few of the grandmas already. I have full confidence in my staff that they are prepared, and we will make sure that we have the appropriate training for any of our records officers moving forward. And all I can say is, we're ready.
The reading.
Are we, any grammar requests pending right now?
Afternoon or morning?
No names, no names.
We always have one or two grandma requests.
So it's not uncommon?
No, it's, it would take about twenty hours a week to, depending on how many people are willing to pay for their grammar requests, because some of them are quite large.
And sometimes there are legal issues, and James is here, and, but I, we haven't spoken directly, but I know that our office will continue to be more than willing to help when there are legal issues with the grammar requests. But that's been in our office with Tony Baird, and the reasonings seem to be that we don't need to take twenty hours a week of attorney time, when much of that is collecting the records, rather than doing legal analysis.
Also, in some ways, kind of a conflict.
In some instances, it can be.
Doing the grammar requests, and then he's also maybe having to defend, I mean, all these kind of things, that it's better off that we just separate it as such.
Yeah.
Just for the record, we're not talking about grandmothers. The first time I ever heard grandma requests, I thought, "What? What do you wanna do with your grandma?" But this is records, open records requests, so just in case anybody out there wasn't sure.
Government Records and Management Act.
Government Records and Management Act, yes, thank you.
So I'd waive the rules?
I would like to take, if possible, another...
Week?
Another session to be able to make sure we have this fully prepared.
I'm not waiving anything.
Okay. It's on for initial, so we can just put it back on our agenda for next time.
Yeah, till the ninth.
Yep, to the ninth.
Did we decide when we wanted Chris to bring back, you know, the 12A? Did we give him a timeframe on that?
I think the sooner the better. Chris, do you have a timeframe that you would be comfortable with?
Next planning commission meeting is February 4th, so we need to run it there. We'll have to have a public hearing again to consider the whole document. Soon as it will be back to you is March.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
And then I have, sorry, Chris, I have one more question. Where are we at with that gentleman, Forrest, is his name Forrest?
Forrest Olson, yes.
Yeah.
So the small-scale slaughter facility, we'll be going through that again with the planning commission this next time. We've been through, I think this would be the third round of code updates. So we took it to them last time, they asked for some additional changes or considerations. Again, specific to volume, that tends to be a trend there. I think Mr. Gunnel was aware of that discussion, too. Yep. So we're trying to refine how we accommodate or fill this, this niche of what's too big and what's too small. Because we don't wanna impose conditions on someone who's just doing their own operation, and we don't wanna open the door so wide that they're running a full-on manufacturing or extraction, however you look at that, processing facility.
So are we looking at the earliest March on that also, or?
We hope we have a good match for, for the commission this next time in February, which means it would come to you maybe towards the end of February, early March.
Okay, thanks.
Keep close, I think there is some legislative things that's happening right now, and they're working with the Utah Department of Agriculture. I remember listening to some things about that today in the confirmation hearing, and there's, they're really working to try to, you know, even increase some funding so they get more inspectors to really come out and ramp up some of these smaller operations to still be able to function.
Yeah, one of the people I'm working with is with the Department of Ag, and they've got some good info, info back to us and to the commission to explain what kind of inspections happen for these types of processing facilities under the state's rules. And so there's... happen for these types of processing facilities under the state's rules, and so there's some really good detail that the planning commission's comfortable with, it's really back to volume and how we fit that little space in between.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, we are on item, we already did D and E on twelve, so we're on thirteen A, set date for the special county council meeting, and as Bryce mentioned, we have, I believe it's five days, according to state law, after the, the party nominates a replacement to approve that replacement, so we were looking at just meeting again Tuesday, February second, next Tuesday at five PM, and just making that approval and having that be the only item on the agenda. Will you guys be available so we can have a quorum?
You can always do it via Zoom, too, because I mean, they probably advertise that way and take care of that one item of business.
So we wouldn't even have to come in, that might not be a bad idea.
We wouldn't have to come in.
Let's do that.
Should we do it by Zoom?
Yeah.
Now that we all know how.
We wouldn't swear in the person that day, would we, Janine?
I would assume that it would be at the first council.
At the first council meeting, okay, I wondered about that. Okay, would it be okay, would you be, would we be able to do that by Zoom? Yeah, okay.
Does that need to be noticed?
Yes, and I, I noticed in our, in our code, it says for a special meeting like that, you need to give five days' notice, because it's not an emergency meeting. Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it's Tuesday, February the second, are we going to decide?
Just let me try, we want to zoom.
Yeah. I'm sorry, say that again.
What time of the day would we want to zoom?
Well, if, should we just do it at five PM? Which is our standing time.
It shouldn't take too long, should it?
It shouldn't take very long at all.
No.
Yeah.
Unless we can't get in, then everybody can't hear each other.
Couldn't hear me, we can't.
So five PM?
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay, Barbara?
I'm not a fan of Zoom meetings, so it's okay, I'll participate in it.
You can also do it in person, yeah, if the council wanted to do it in person.
I go either way.
Which does the council prefer? Or, I guess we could, we could do it hybrid, if we really wanted to, right?
Yeah, somebody's got to be here as an anchor.
Somebody's got to be an anchor.
I'll come here.
I'll come here. I'll be here.
All right, sounds like we're all coming here.
So you're going to come in, wait.
We just enjoy each other, don't we?
We do, actually. Okay.
So Zoom is out.
So Zoom is out. Okay.
I didn't say that I'd be here, though.
You can come and Zoom if you want.
I'll come and Zoom.
You Zoom right in.
Okay, so, five PM Tuesday, February second, in person, only thing on the agenda will be to approve who the new executive is.
We need to make sure Carl knows that also.
Oh, good point. I will send Carl a text.
He's supposed to be watching, like, Carl, next.
That's right, Carl.
Maybe he went the bad.
He could have, he could have.
That was scary, he goes, Carl?
Yeah, that was scary.
I just say, hopefully, hopefully Mike picks, that, that's, that might be the only thing Mike didn't pick up tonight, I'd get in trouble.
All right, okay, so we'll move to council member reports, and then also, just so you, in case you forgot, we will have an executive session following that. Okay, so council reports, so Nolan, do you have anything to report?
I don't, I don't even know what to report, I'm so new, so how's that?
Okay.
Sorry, I was late today.
Okay, Barbara?
When are we going to get department assignments? Are they going to stay the same, or what are we going to do?
We were going to wait till our February ninth meeting, because we don't know how things will change, so.
Okay, good deal.
Okay.
Other than that, nope.
Okay, Gordy?
Uh, three of us attended the walkthrough out at the, the new road department sheds, and as you, most of you were there last time, and now, things that have changed, and everything is pretty well put together, most of the painting's done, the asphalt has all been placed around all the buildings, and in the one big building where they were going to be able to pull in two big dump trucks, side by side and front to back, they had, I think they had five side dumps, great big side dumps that were pulled in, and there were still plenty of room on the front and the back, but it is a very, very, very impressive facility, and the next time we go there, I think it'll be in full operation, and we, as a council, ought to be very, very proud of how hard they've worked to make it look good, and I'm excited that we made the right decision there, and it will, it will, it will be a really wonderful facility for the county road department, and I guess it's road and fire and weed are all out there in that particular area, but it was interesting what they've done, and that's very interesting, all the modernization that they're going to be able to do, but I was impressed, I think our builders and our architects have done an excellent job out there.
Thanks, Gordy.
I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Uh, ditto, on that tour, I thought that was, it's, it is, it's, what's so neat is, it's a forty to fifty year vision, that it's, it is set in its capacity, I think, that we're looking, that that's something that will really service this county for a long time. And I even drove up to the north facility, up there by Richmond, and took a gander at that this morning when I was on my way to do something, and, and it's about the same status, they've got everything pretty well, they're just a little municipal things that they're doing to finish it up, and it's just a hub station, and, and has one little office area as all, but everything else is all green and go, asphalt, everything, they've really worked close with the Richmond city up there, and they share the same ingress, and then Richmond now has, so we're not having so many problems on that conference road now, Richmond can just take off that ingress right into their facility, too, and so it's quite a shared facility up there, and it's about the same, not near as big out there, but it's just a hub facility, it's well done, well thought.
Well, in the report, they said that they were just about same old, same old on both facilities, so when they move in, they'll have both facilities functioning and ready to go.
You said two to three months, that we'll have our grand opening and.
So they keep the building on Tenth West?
No.
That's going to be gone?
That's, that's another process, and a lot of interest in that, so.
I volunteered us all that if they have the grand opening, that they'll feed us hamburgers and chips, so kind of, I volunteered us to go.
Good, good plan, I like that.
Love the art, party.
That'll be a party, yeah, make Gordy in charge. Is that it, everything, Dave?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, for my report, I will mention that I discovered that Janine and Bart have been working to get us new iPads, and we should be getting those one in the next couple months.
They're on back order, like everything else, but yeah, we'll get them here as soon as we can.
So that will be exciting, because these are, these are old, and it'll be good to have some, something new. And then, I'm not sure if you were, if you remember Senate Bill eighteen, Senator Harper is the bill that will allow an exemption for tangible personal property for businesses up to fifty thousand dollars, which is an increase from the fifteen that it is now, and UAC has been working on fighting that because of the loss it will mean to our counties, and I asked Kathleen to pull some numbers for us, and thought I'd let you know that if that passes, it will be more than a seven hundred thousand dollar loss of tax revenue for the entire county, so that includes the county council, the school districts, the municipalities, and any other taxing entities, and each of the school districts, it's about two hundred seventy thousand dollars loss in each district, and to our general fund, it would be a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. They also ask for a letter, and I'm, I'm trying to get in touch with our school district superintendents to let them know about this, but I plan to sign on to a letter with those numbers to let the sponsor know, and, and to say, please don't do this, because we'll have to make that revenue up somehow, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Was his purpose of this just to make taxing and tracking easier, and he did not assume the other side, or what was the drive?
I haven't spoken to him, I would think that it's, as a legislator, you always want to cut taxes, and I think that this particular tangible personal property is kind of honor us to businesses, they hate it, but I don't think that the sponsor realized what it would do, the unintended consequences to counties and school districts and other taxing entities who then have to raise taxes to make up the difference, and that's the problem.
Is this the one that sometimes even on personal property and, and on items like that, they'll even sometimes break them down into little pieces, so that they fall under a parameter of X amount of dollars, so that they don't have to pay taxes?
Yes.
And, you know, and what they're doing is they're just, they're even taking that higher to where people, you know, like, there's some businesses that all they have is people and then laptops, and they value, you know, those laptops coming in, they're such low value that they, you know, that they don't have to pay any kind of property tax on them, and if they raise that even higher, then they'll be able to expand even more, and I think that's, that was an issue there, that basically that a lot of these businesses were almost coming in and say, well, okay, we're going to buy this bolt, and then we're going to buy that, that thing and that thing, you know, and to try to keep everything under a threshold to where they don't, it's, you know, it's under the radar of having to pay any kind of property tax, and this, this even expands, that exacerbates that problem greater, so.
Does anybody know how long that fifteen thousand limit was in for? How long's it been on the books?
I think that that was an increase as well, and that, I don't know how many years it was, but I think that it was a increase from a couple years ago.
I mentioned that in the discussion, but I can't remember, they've mentioned how long it'd been in effect.
Kathleen Howell would know.
Yeah.
She's very well versed in all of that, as you'd imagine.
That's quite a hot topic on that, on the UAC discussion, what was it, last Thursday?
Yeah, last Thursday. So, okay, so we need to go into executive session, and I've been advised that the motion should give the reason for it that's listed on our agenda, so whoever makes the motion, if you'll please include that wording, that would be fantastic.
Madam Chair, I request that we, or I petition that we go into an executive session, discuss Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five one C, discussion of pending or reasonably imminent litigation. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we move to executive session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, do you want to say that it carries unanimously?
Oh, carries unanimously, because it takes a what, a two-thirds vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chris, are you going to stand here or are you taking off? I will, I just want to see.